It shows with.
Yeah.
And so.
But.
Or again, we wish. And it was definitely. You can have this.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah.
It wasn't real obvious.
Guys.
Got to. And you guys.
And that's.
Most you don't want.
But.
Into the major people.
Yeah.
What are you doing, David?
Doing well, right? Watch yourself.
Yeah.
You're unfair.
At all the same boat.
Always spring to show up.
This is.
Have you, have you been in the woods, Greg?
Hello, Hinkley. How are you guys?
Plenty of snow out there.
Oh.
It's good to see you walking.
My kids, my daughter especially, she thinks we should be out tapping trees.
Oh, I suppose that's coming right now. A lot of work this year.
He said, I said, good luck. I'll stand on the road.
Oh, yeah.
Get snowmobiles?
No. Snowshoes.
I'll look at my.
She was out there yesterday with snowshoes walking around.
No.
That'd be a picture. She's got. Falls. I, I honestly, the snow is like this deep in the woods. Way steep.
Yeah, there's. Oh, your deer doing around the area?
I don't know. I, I haven't seen any. But they generally move out of our farm.
Oh.
And.
Doesn't feel right.
I, I was gone. I've been gone for a couple of months, so.
Oh, it don't sound.
Yeah. I just got home a week ago.
Good.
Upgrade.
No upgrades. Well, you deserve this cool weather.
Joe, I can move. I can move away from the table. Oh, no, I can't.
You want me?
Sounds good.
If you want.
You mean to be.
Just like airlines, I got upgraded.
I can.
Yep.
Well. I guess it'll be sooner or later.
I scooted down, Terry. Didn't need to have.
Fine city.
Oh, Craig, you did.
You're kind of hard on us. I'm with the guy Sandy.
Okay, is Kyle coming?
Grandkids are Sandy.
Okay.
No. Sandy.
Okay.
The same. They'll throw a bunch. That's what I got trying to remember. It's all.
Plus, I said, I'm like, wait. What was it?
Let's just kind of slow it up now.
We're done.
So pretty quiet.
Yep, we're done after last weekend of this last month. Yeah. There's my daughter's teaching. So. It was like.
This. You're allowed. Tracy.
I was.
Smaller.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Holy cow, they had a good.
Yes.
Really played well.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I have nine o'clock. And welcome to the special meeting of the Pine County Board. Just so you know, J.J. Waldham will be attending the board meeting. Uh. Committee as a whole. Uh, via interactive technology pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D dash O two. And he'll be able to be seen and heard by all commissioners. So. With that said, we'll call the meeting to order and rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united in this world, will never be untouched.
First up, we have. I thirty-five Hinkley Traffic and Tribal Economy Business. Park Possibility Study with Leslie and John. And Beth, Beth is online.
Morning, Beth.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to participate today.
Yes, thank you for participating. So Leslie, you're going to lead us off?
Yeah.
All right.
Good morning. I'm Leslie Satter. You are Economic Development Coordinator. And we've invited John Shard Lewis Van Tech here today to give you the presentation of the results of the feasibility and economic impact study that they were hired to do in cooperation with Malax Corporate Ventures as well as Pine County for the Hinkley area. They identified some land that could potentially be a business park and wanted to further understand. How that land could be accessed easier, what it might mean to the Hinkley area. And that is why John and his experts came in and did a very thorough study over the last year. I was just looking. We engaged with them back in February, March of twenty twenty-two, and they wrapped it up at the end of twenty twenty-two. They were effective and efficient. And I'll turn it over to John now to give you guys a presentation.
John, before you start, I, I do want to recognize we do have Hinkley officials here, the mayor and planner. So. We've got those two people in our presence. So thank you for both for coming.
Excellent. Good morning, members, board members and other guests. I was going to be participating remotely, but I think we're at an important enough juncture at this study that it would be good to be here in person and have a discussion with you. What I want to do is just give you kind of a quick summary of the report. Some of this information, some of you at least have heard before. It's a presentation that Beth and I gave to the Malax Corporate Ventures Board recently. So. When, when we did it previously, there were more people with me. So I've been introduced. That's the, that's the sum total of the introductions. I want to just kind of review what the scope was, what the request was from the RFP that we responded to. A big part of that was traffic analysis. Obviously, part of the motivation for this is improving access to the area to create development opportunities. And so documenting what the current traffic conditions are and making projections for the future is an important part of that study. We did a high level market assessment. We did an investigation of kind of comparably situated business parks throughout the state. Conducted some interviews with people who were known, who understand those parks and have experienced with them. We made some projections about economic development to kind of talk about what, what could happen if we're, if you're successful in, in realizing the development opportunities here. We looked at infrastructure. There's, there's not a great deal of information available to that, and there will need to be additional investigations of what I'll call the downstream capacity of the system in Hinkley, assuming that Hinkley infrastructure serves the property. That's a topic we could, we could talk about. We did a high level business park concept plan. The site has some constraints, which you can see, and the one that we came up with will obviously need to be refined, but it's, it's a good basic layout that has the flexibility to create different lot sizes depending upon what people's interests are. We know from conversations with the Minnesota Department of Transportation that assuming this goes forward to actually seek a permit to change the access on thirty-five, that they're going to want to do a much more involved, the federal government will require a much more involved study. And that they're going to want to follow what's called the NEPA or National Environmental Protection Act procedure. So the work that we did on the environmental scan was just to sort of identify some of the key information, but it will need to be reviewed in much more detail. So I'll go through that quickly. We identified some transportation alternatives and high level costs for what the relative cost would be for each of those. We've had the opportunity to meet on a couple of occasions with Minnesota Department of Transportation and a number of other conversations. So I think an important part of where we should focus our discussion is sort of what happens next and where things stand with those conversations. So again, my objective is going to be to go through the presentation pretty quickly. And please hold your questions and we'll get to them at the end. And then funding, we, we have a, a pretty robust group and at Stan Tech that does funding throughout North America. And there's been a number of different grant opportunities that have been available. I know Beth is on the line and that she prepared a summary of potential funding requests for Congressman Staubert. She can review that, review that with you. So. That's the lead in. The, the project that we did really started with background. We did an inventory and analysis. Leslie and the county staff were helpful in getting us connected with GIS mapping resources, which we used. Again, we did, in the first phase, we did that high level economic impact analysis. And I guess it's important to say at this point that that's all based upon what if scenarios. I mean, if we were able to develop half of it in this time period, what would that look like? And so we're really just putting together that framework so that work can be done. And again, we did do some market studies of how others around the state of Minnesota are approaching business parks. We did again, look at the alternatives and feasibility and then talked a bit about implementation. So we, we really did two study area base maps. The first of them was a broader area that shows how this property fits within the kind of broader South Hinkley area. Identified major roadways, parcels. Those are ten foot contour intervals. You can see there's some steep slopes and there's some wetlands and so forth. And then for the work that we did more closely to the actual business, potential business park, this is the kind of close up look. And you can see pretty significant bands of steep slopes going to divide the third, the bottom third from the top and a couple of other areas of constraints. So again, a, a big part of what the request for proposal was, was to document the existing traffic conditions. And we looked at counts. Obviously, this is too small for you to read. But it's all there for you to read if you want to. And we did traffic counts in April and then again in June. And we understand from talking to folks in Hinkley that June may not be the peak, peak period. It could be very well in July, but gives you an idea. We looked at all those intersections and we looked at them in the AM peak and the PM peak. And we identified some areas based upon existing traffic conditions where the northbound ramps, for instance, under thirty-five had some congestion issues. We also looked at crash data, which will be an important part of consideration going forward. Obviously, not, not surprisingly, concentration closer to the freeway interchange. So we then developed some forecasts for the year twenty forty-two, again, based upon some assumptions about how much development will happen in the surrounding area and then what the development potential could be for the property. We also had to make some assumptions about the mix of specific businesses in the area. So we looked at fifty percent manufacturing uses and fifty percent warehouse uses. We then did development scenario for the assumption that two thirds of the entire business center would be completed within twenty years. That's probably a pretty aggressive assumption, but again, we want to be looking at what the upside potential could be for this. And we again, looked at the traffic forecast that included the background growth of about five per point five percent per year for growth in the area. Again, too small to read, but you can see that with those forecasts, there again are a couple of areas where there's actual failure of, of the intersections. And that's information that's relevant to Mendot and helps justify the need to improve the area with the access improvements in order to create that development opportunity. So we looked at, again, at the high level, a series of different alternatives. One is just a new interchange. And we're showing just a basic diamond interchange. There's other design configurations that could be considered, but this, this shows a diamond interchange, just a titch over a mile south of the forty-eight interchange. And that's an issue. The proximity of those two interchanges is a concern because you have people decelerating to exit at forty-eight, when you have people accelerating to get on the freeway at the new interchange. So that would be an issue that'll need to be reviewed in great detail. We also looked at a few different alternative ways to improve access off of the trunk highway twenty-three interchange and different ways to get there. This is positive in the sense that it, it's a more direct connection to all of the, the development that's occurring in twenty-three across the state of Minnesota. It also would be a county road system that would provide access. So you'd in some ways have more control over those alignments. This is one that shows a connection up to Weber. Another one shows the connection a little further to the east. So you'd need then a local road that would come over and provide access to the southern part of the business park. And a third one that shows a connection that would then anticipate the extension of that roadway to the east. One of the things that we heard from talking to a number of folks around the state was that the desirability of, of the surrounding area and the availability of housing is an important consideration for people considering where they're going to build their business. So this would provide improved access for roadways to the east, not only improve access to the casino area and the golf course and areas further to the east, but would potentially open up an area for development. So again, I'm going to go through this really quickly. We looked at demand indicators. We looked at what the development history has been in, in the state of Minnesota and Pine County and the Hinkley area. Again, we can talk about these details. You can see that the Hinkley area and Pine County grew at a slightly lower rate during the period from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-one and that there was a decline in employment at one point there. Importantly, we did, we look at some of the information about people who live in the community and work elsewhere and people who work elsewhere and live in the community. And these are numbers that are relevant to site selectors. In other words, is there a labor force available to, to work in my job if I were to locate my business there? Are there people who have the skill set to do the jobs that we are thinking about, who might consider an opportunity to work closer to home, et cetera? So we looked at that information, both for the Hinkley area and for the broader area. So this is a graphic that just simplifies that. It shows the, a summary, a high scale summary of, of the kind of jobs that are in the area. Manufacturing and, and county residents. And it shows the relative percentage of the county residents who work in those different sectors of manufacturing, transportation and warehousing. So again, the, the point there is that there, there does appear to be an opportunity for people who have the skill set, but don't have that opportunity currently in the study area. We did an analysis. We identified every comparable business park within a forty-seven mile radius and looked at what their respective development experience has been during that time period. We showed the property in context, kind of looked at what the immediate competition would be and had the opportunity to review those parks and had conversations with the people familiar with them. This is just a summary of some of those interviews. Found that when they talked about what the assets were in their various business parks, having a variety of businesses was a plus. A number of them said having an anchor business is really helpful to marketing and also how you brand the park. A, a very important consideration going forward is that the character of the park itself, kind of the design standards that are adhered to is important to who you're trying to attract. You know, and on one hand, you may have folks who want to start up a business. And that business at least initially requires a lot of outdoor storage of equipment or product. And if that's not handled well with screening and so forth, it may be a deterrent to someone who has aspirations to do a, a building and site more attractive than that. So kind of finding the sweet spot in terms of being accommodating to folks who want to make an investment in the community, but also doing it in a way that moves toward a, a common vision for that area. Highway proximity is very important. A number of folks said that the opportunity to provide large parcels was attractive, especially in, in a layout where it lends itself to being subdivided for smaller parcels to. Strong demand for properties that are, and this is a key that you hear all the time, as ready to go as possible. I'm sure you've heard the phrase shovel ready. We've been doing a number of studies around the state for communities that have been told by the Department of Economic Development that there are businesses of statewide significance that are looking for a, a home in their community or one of their neighbors, but they're only interested in doing it if the environmental review process has been completed. So we've been doing what are called AUARs or Alternative Urban Area Wide Reviews, which gives the community a chance to review scenarios and not just a, not just a specific project. We're doing one in Northfield right now. We've done two of them in Cottage Grove and one in Lionel Lakes, and we just finished one in Becker for XL Energy for all of the land that's going to be no longer needed as buffer around the Sherco coal burning plants. So that opportunity to try and be as proactive as possible about paving the way for entitlements is an important consideration. Again, not rocket science, but websites are essential. Other forms of outreach through chambers of commerce and site selectors are important. Again, shovel ready. And again, another theme we heard a lot was that the attractiveness of the nearby community is also important. And then it talked about the types of, types of incentives that communities are considering for those. Some of the potential advantages. You've already got the, some incubator facility, infrastructure there. That could be a strength to be built upon. The whole idea of providing an opportunity for entrepreneurs to be able to get started in a business and maybe even having a building that what they could start out with and then, you know, potentially build another building as their business grew. Again, that whole idea of site readiness, doing as much as you can to be prepared to accommodate the development. And then the question was, you know, given the fact that there's already conference facilities and meeting facilities at the casino, how could that be leveraged as an asset? Again, I'm going to skip over this, but it does talk about economic impact analysis and talks about what the direct impact of, of the various types of development is and then what the indirect impact is and, and how the, each of them might induce other development and then some estimates as to total potential impact. These are very, very large numbers, but again, they're based upon the assumption that, you know, over half of the park could be developed in the next twenty years and at, with the mix that's being talked about. So I, again, I would just suggest that this, this identifies what the upside is and what the motivation could be for, for doing the hard work that's going to be taken to get this done. Again, we did a, a kind of a cursory look at infrastructure. There isn't a lot in the area on the right hand side of the screen there. There's a, a little detail with a red dot that shows where a lift station is right now. That's the only sanitary sewer service in the area. It does have some capacity to take some development flow from this site. Again, we don't know what the downside, downstream capacity is or what improvements might be needed in order to, to take more. One of the things that we suggested you might consider is obviously working with the, the city of Hinkley to explore economic feasibility and kind of the cost and implications of extending the utilities. Potentially, this could be done with a well and septic initially and just plumbed in such a way that it could be connected readily in the future. So when the tax base is there to support it, it would be workable. So those are some, some of the issues that need to be thought about. Again, we looked at a number of different examples, a number of different prototypes. The one that we thought was a, a really good model was the one that's in North Mankato. And this shows you the mix of lot sizes that were shown there. And so that's the, the, what we replicated in terms of the, the range of lot sizes for the, again, real simple generalized sketch that we developed here. So on the south side, there, you know, there could be a number of different ways to get to there. This assumes that all of those lots would have direct access on to a new road and we wouldn't just be putting curb cuts on to existing streets that they'd be served with an interior roadway system. It's a, a simple layout with a roadway through and it does lend itself to a variety of different lot sizes. Some of those are there like seven to ten acres, but they could certainly be readily subdivided. So again, we're not, not suggesting that this is a final product by any stretch, but it does show that the land does lend itself to a good, efficient layout with good highway visibility. It, this layout really minimizes the crossing of the creek there, which would be an important issue from an environmental standpoint. Again, I'm not going to go through this in, in detail. We did do an environmental issues review and it did include that in the report and that report has been shared with Mendot and others. So we did the environmental scan. We looked at, you know, areas that have been recorded with potential contamination. We did a high level wetland review. We identified the flood plain in the area and, and mapped where that was based upon existing information. We showed the location of contaminated properties based on the pollution control agency's database. Identified farmland in the area is going to be an important consideration, kind of socially and politically as you go forward. Looked at some of the environmental justice issues that are going to be required in the permitting process, identifies where low, low income populations exist. And we talked about it in the context of the recreation system. Obviously, there's some important trails, a snowmobile trails and the Willard Monk or State Trail. So we show that proximity as well. And then wildlife threatened and endangered species. Again, this, this is the kind of set of issues that will need to be reviewed in a lot more detail if the property goes for the, forward with the permitting process. Again, we did some high level cost estimates. These don't include the cost of engineering, but that diamond interchange we're projecting about eighteen million dollars. The first alternative with the extension from alternative number two from a highway twenty-three interchange is fifteen million dollars. Alternative three, eight point five million dollars. And extending the Hinkley Road with alternative four would increase the cost to eleven million five hundred thousand. So this is a summary of those costs, which is included in the report. So let me segue from there and just, just talk about the fact that obviously we know if this is going to involve any change to the interstate system, that not only will the Federal Highway Administration be involved, but Minnesota Department of Transportation would need to play a, a lead role. So we contacted them pretty early on in the process and communicated with them throughout the process. We've had two in-person meetings with them and a number of different conversations. I'll say that we've been really, really surprised, frankly, with their response. They've been very motivated to help with this project. We know that at this point they are in the process of preparing a request for proposal for, for consultants to prepare grant applications. And they want to, they're intending to do grant applications for each of the eleven tribes in the state every year for the next four to five years. So there's a real motivation on the part of the state and a part of Mendat to look for projects like this. So that's a very positive thing. I know Beth is on the phone and she can talk about the, the work she's been doing with Congressman Staubert and others. So we, we did talk with Mendat about the, you know, is a new interchange even in the cards, given the fact that it doesn't meet the standards for spacing? And they said that, you know, obviously that would be a consideration, but it's been done before, was done in Rochester not too long ago. So it'll be looked at among the, the various alternatives. And then again, there's a lot of information in the report that talks about many, many, many different types of grants that are available that could support parts of this. So where we are in the, at this point is the, the report has been finalized. You folks have a copy of it. We did submit a copy of it to Mendat at their request. What we recommend is that we should, you should continue to communicate with Mendat about their funding assistance. They've been real clear about saying they want to play a role and that they're, they will, they will definitely help put together a permit application and they will provide in-kind services to that process. It's also really important that Pine County and the city of Hinkley and Malax Corporate Ventures are on the same page and that you're working together toward a common, common goal here. And I think I'll move back to the table for questions or discussion.
Questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a question. This is Commissioner Walden District Four. I represent the northern part. You mentioned fifty percent would be manufacturing, fifty percent warehousing. That's the, the only two options for that property?
No, that was just for the purpose of doing the analysis. It was just a, a framework, just a placeholder. No, that was just for the purpose of doing the analysis. It was just a, a framework, just a placeholder.
I gotcha. And then, uh. Like in the covenants, starting to think that development, is there any talk of, uh, no compete clauses or anything on that property? That you know of, that you can share?
You haven't gotten to that point in the discussion. That would be kind of something that would be talked about within what I'll call an end user, somebody who's actually going to make an investment there.
Yeah, the reason I ask like for, uh, anything that would compete. With the, uh. Developers, other interests, you know, not just, it's just to mention gambling, but also fuel and food and everything else. You know, you don't know of any as of now then, right?
No, I mean, uh, there, there's a lot of issues that are going to need to be addressed. There potentially annexation. Uh, comprehensive plan amendments at the county level and the city level would be relevant, uh. Who's going to be the zoning authority? So you, you, you would start with, you know, how are you zoning the property? What uses are allowed? What uses are conditional? What are the standards included in zoning? If you were to take it another step further and actually talk about what. Who's going to own and manage the, the, the business park and whether or not there's. A need for, um, covenants and deed restrictions, that'd be kind of at that point in the process.
Okay, would the, would the county have an opportunity to. See any restrictive covenants or anything on a property before our county made any commitment to dollars invested?
Uh, well, I think.
At what point, what point would that be shared?
Everything's on the table right now from my perspective. I think you should share openly and, and you know, what the possibilities are, what the concerns would be. You know, what it, what everybody's role and responsibility is. I think this is when those things are. Are valuable.
All right, thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Yeah, it's fine. And I just, sorry, Terry. I didn't want to rob your thunder or anything. I realized that's in. Right, right in your district, so I apologize.
You're fine. It's fine.
Uh, okay, thank you.
The city of Hinkley, do you have any thoughts or concerns, comments?
We, we've. Talked extensively about the infrastructure issues. And where the. Funding could end up going with that because obviously with something of this magnitude, we aren't going to have the capacity in our water. And sewer systems, so that would all have to be updated. Um, and then of course, this area would need to be. Uh, annexed from Berry Township into the city if we stay with our current standards of. Uh, needing to be in the city for our water and sewer that we're, we're preventing. So. Yeah, Mark, are we in the? Middle of the study for capacity?
I, I know Kyle has asked our engineer to look at some of that from a high level. I, I haven't heard. Any results of that analysis that they were going to do. But I believe they were taking a, a high level look at that.
We wanted to start researching that now to see where we're at.
We would definitely look at our, our capacity. Provide services to this area.
Obviously that's relevant to a comprehensive plan amendment as well. You're going to need that information to decide if you're going to. Uh, change, uh, your. Corporate limits and, um, and obviously want to work with the township in that process as well.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I wonder if Beth would be able to maybe give a little insight in, into corporate ventures perspective on the project. How it would unfold, what, you know, what the county and the city, um, might be asked. Uh, to, to step in at or what points, just to kind of frame it up because they did, were here because corporate ventures owns this property. And is interested in making some investments and. To me, it's an opportunity, right? But there's a whole lot of questions and this is new. I think to probably everyone at the table. Well, John, you've probably done these similar things, but, um, for, for Pine County. Uh, this is new and for the city of Hinkley, this would be a, a development probably on rival with the, the largest. Single site ever. So Beth, I don't know, are you able to maybe give some context on, on your, your vision?
Well, I can certainly try. Thank you, uh, Chair Holland and Commissioners and Mayor Zeeman. Um, this is new for us too. So this is, um, kind of our biggest development, um, in quite some time and. And our first transportation really, um. Dip into that. When we started this, uh, partnership with Pine County, it was, you know, to discover what the possibilities were. Um, and wanting to know, does it make economic sense, um, for the region? And, um, I think we, we learned a lot through the study process, but there, for us, there's still a lot of unanswered questions as well. Um, we've sort of started our. Commitment to that section of Pine County with, starting with the, um. Medical office building and then we had Lady Luck Estates. And now we have the tribal business incubators. Hopefully rolling there in the next eighteen months, Sugar Maple Crossing coming on board. And so. We really have a commitment to develop and expand that section of, um. The land that we own over in, in Pine County. Um, we have not, um. To Commissioner Walham's questions have not really even thought about what those. What it would look like for that business park yet. We, we just really wanted to do a study to find out. Um, what was possible and, and what the economics were tied to it.
Thanks, Beth. I think we all know we're, um, treading on some, some pretty new ground here, but, um. John, in, in the, the traffic studies numbers, they're just numbers to me. And, and so can you give me some perspective? Is that? Highway forty-eight interchange, is it, do those numbers say that thing is maxed out? In, in your opinion?
That's a really good question. And I mean, do those numbers jump out and say that this is a priority transportation project for the state of Minnesota? I, I'd say no. I mean, there, there's a congestion issue. There's some PMP care is, issues, but it's not something that's going to compete. On a direct, so traffic safety or capacity issue with, I mean, there's, there's. Situations throughout the state that are that, you know, comparable or worse.
Yeah.
Um, i- is there, is there a? Uh, tremendous upswell of market opportunity that isn't being satisfied? No. I mean, it, it's going to be a market that has to be created. It's going to, it's going to take a concerted effort over time. And, uh, it's going to take a, a shared coordinated effort between. Leslie and, and, and Lax Corporate Ventures, uh, to nurture those businesses and bring them along. It's going to be a long process. It's not going to be. Something you do and cut the ribbon and celebrate and it's done. It's, it's going to be an asset that you're going to need to nurture, kind of more like a garden than a. And all that on project you're building. Um, but all of that information is relevant to going forward. So if you're going to go forward, you have to do an interchange modification permit. And that requires this much more extensive process. And so the work that you've did, that has been done. Is the foundation for that. And it also is information that. MinDOT District fifteen now has in hand and makes the project more viable. I mean, they, they're now aware of this. Project opportunity where a group of local communities have, and a private, uh, entity have worked together to advance the project and move it forward. So. Two things, one, um. Again, we were frankly surprised that they were as forthcoming with their support as they were. And I've had a lot to do with MinDOT through the years and it depends on which district you're in and, you know, which district engineer you're working with, but. I think Dwayne Hill is as good as any there is, and he was very forthright in saying, you know, they want to help. Um, and the fact that they've got this initiative coming forward where they're going to be doing. Grant applications for every tribal community, uh, in the state over the, and over the next four years. So it's not just. A one and done. It's, it's a significant commitment. So I think given that and the fact that you're kind of ahead of the queue. Uh, is an asset that should be maximized as well.
What, what I was trying to, as I was. Trying to figure these things out at home, I was trying to figure out those. Does your study point to one of those alternatives? As being clearly. The path we should all. The city, the tribe, the county, we should all get behind and say. Okay, now this study's done, let's jump on board with. This alternative three or B or C or whatever. Uh, I. I'm not smart enough to figure it out, I guess.
Well, let me pretend I am.
Okay.
I would say if you could have. Uh, direct access off of a new freeway interchange immediately adjacent to the property, that, that would be a home run. It's, it's, so I think you pursue that. Uh, you see if you can get that done with intersection modifications to design or whatever. If not, I, I think. I think alternative four, which is, uh. Which avoids wetlands, uh, but also extends to the east. I think, I think the opportunity, uh. When Hinkley embraces, assuming Hinkley embraces this idea, I think you're going to need to be opening up for some new residential areas. The opportunity to create, uh, some new housing opportunities in close proximity. Is desirable from the standpoint of how it supports the business park, but it also creates tax base. Uh, and, and creates amenity that makes the community more of it, more desirable. So. I think the alternative for which is basically just the modification that assumes the extension further to the east. Provides another, another high capacity roadway that's paralleling forty-eight. So it's got the benefit of taking some of the pressure off of forty-eight. Uh, if somebody literally lives, has a place in Wisconsin and they're trying to, you know, they have no interest in doing business at that intersection. They're really just trying to get to the east. This would be an opportunity for them to bypass that, or if they're just going to the casino, same thing.
So I've talked to some of the people that live on that possible extension to the Hinkley Road and, um, they are not happy.
They're thrilled with it. They're thrilled with the idea.
Well, you know, and the thing is, is these are farmers that have been family farms for generations and generations. And their houses aren't that far off the road, you know, so it's not like, I mean, you'd be taking basically their whole yard. And, um, I think even just giving up the. The, the fields is, um. It's going to be a struggle to go that way. Yeah, I, I don't know.
A couple of the alternatives are basically just upgrading the existing county road system. So that wouldn't be taking as much.
Yeah, that would be the possible extension. I, I don't, I don't see the possible extension being. A possibility at this point in time. I, I, and I can't see any of these farmers that have been farming for their generations, wanting to sell any of their land for residential. They like it. Their cows.
Certainly respect that. I, I'll also say that I've been doing this for forty-six years. I've been to something like seven thousand public hearings. And I've heard that comment many times and subsequently those people are in and wanting to sell the farm because they get to that point in their life. But I'm just, just saying.
Yeah, I'm looking at one of the big ones here and he's already transferred it to his kids and his kids are starting to take over. And so I mean, it's, yeah. Yeah, and living on one of those farms, it makes you see it through a different eye.
Sure, I agree.
Chair.
Yeah.
So John, early on you had mentioned highway twenty-three and I assume you're familiar with the highway twenty-three. Border Coalition that, that Pine County is a member of. In the absence of this project. When the coalition gets to the segment, you know, coming from Mora to the interstate. Would you foresee that there would be changes needed to that interchange? Regardless of what happens here? I mean, I'm just asking you to look into your crystal ball, but I, I mean, what, what kinds, what are the, the detriments of that existing twenty-three interchange?
It's got some design challenges that would probably need to be addressed in the future. You know, we, we, I, in one of the areas where I've done extensive work in my career is the St. Cloud area and, and kind of central Minnesota and that segment of twenty-three. Uh, so I'm very familiar with it and. Um, this is kind of the eastern end of it. So a lot of the attention and at least initially has been further to the west. But yeah, I think, but it's also an interactive thing. I mean, there would be more interest and more incentive to deal with it if there was. Some burgeoning opportunity here.
Is that the main, um, trucking route to, one of the main links to?
Yeah.
So, so what would happen if we create a point here? And you know, does that help them connect the dots?
Sure does. Yeah. Absolutely. I gotta grab a Kleenex, I'm sorry.
It's the, it's the water and the infrastructure that's going to be huge. Hey, so how's your sewer now? Is it maxed out with what you have, your ponds and stuff or?
We're, we're not at capacity. I mean, we do have some room to grow, but.
How much, you know?
Exactly, no, I don't know. Like you said, we have asked our engineers to do some high level analysis on where we're at. And we try to do that on a fairly regular basis. So that we're not in a situation where we don't have capacity when we have a user that wants to come into the city or. Um, start a new development like this, but so.
So are you thinking you would set it up to pump it to existing? Is there room to expand there or are you going to have to create new?
Uh, I think we would hope to expand our existing facilities.
There room there to do that?
I, I believe we would have room to do that. As far as water capacity, that's a little different. That can be a little more, um. Spaced out. But, uh, again, we, we do have. We are aware that if we, if this. Thing were developed in this size, we would not be able to serve it under our current capacity for manufacturing and industrials.
Well, Beth, um. Isn't there housing or apartments or something that was going to go in over there too? Or was this all going to be business and warehouses?
Um, that map that John showed with the red outline, that was all business park. There is the. Um, Sugar Maple Crossing that's going in next to the, um. The movie theater, that vacant parking lot space. Um, but that is outside of the parameters of this project.
Okay.
Down the road, would we be interested in maybe doing some housing expansion? Maybe.
Okay, thank you.
How, how does the railroad come to play on this?
They go under.
Huh?
They go under, so they, they wouldn't.
So we have to go over, right? If you do new, if you're doing extensions. So you're going to have to cross that track.
Those are built into the cost assumptions, but they're big grade separation. That and the power lines were two things that had to be taken into account.
So have they been consulted yet? Have you had any conversation with them?
No.
Cause that's a short line anyways.
Yeah.
Well, it's quite a report.
Yeah.
I think we all tried to absorb it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, and this question might be for Beth, but, or for John, but we have the study and everybody's still trying to take in all this information. Uh, sounds like they've presented to the Molax Corporate Ventures Board. Um, do you have? Our next steps at this point in time? Are we just taking time to digest, um? I know you. Uh, you know, put in some preliminary requests for funding through the federal. Uh, legislature, but I just kind of wondering if there's a plan to, to move forward right now, or are we just going to? Kind of see how that plays out.
I, I think that's a really good question, Mark. Um, right now, Molax Corporate Ventures has submitted for some congressional, congressionally directed spending. Uh, with Congressman Stauber and Senators Club Sharon Smith. But not particularly for the, um, any interchange work or highway work. It was for the planning and pre-development of the business park. So. Sort of next steps into what that study would look like. I think all of us need a, a little bit of time yet to digest. You know, this, the study and, you know, make, make our, our moves and what, what we feel is most important for our communities. Um, I think a great next step is getting this project on a tip. It seems that it's not on anybody's tip and MinDOT really, my understanding. Needs it on a tip before we can really get moving and really start exploring funding opportunities.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, does that have to come from the county to MinDOT?
I don't know that answer.
I I don't either.
Mister Chair, it's Mark here.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, um. I I think MOLAX Ban can sponsor. Federal transportation projects. Um, so you know, either city over five thousand. Uh, a tribal entity or the county would have to submit. The project, but you know, obviously we don't have any money identified at this point. So we got, you know, it's the chicken and the egg, I guess, on a project like this.
Thanks, Mark. I I'm always confused how. How how we move that forward, I think um. Uh, I don't believe corporate ventures. Or the MOLAX Ban has a transportation department.
We do have a community development department and I've I've heard that there is a member of that team who. Um, has some connection with. With the Mindot and how that tip process works. Um, I have a meeting scheduled with him next week to try to gain further information, but. I think as John said a little bit ago, um. We too view this as a project that is going to take many years, it's it's not like. You know, we got the study, let's write the check and build the. Build the connection next week, like it's it's going to take time to apply it, apply for and receive funding. Work on infrastructure, work on the whole plan for a business park and and the expansion of. Of that section of land, so we're we're in it for the long haul and um, we hope that Pine County and. Um, City of Hinckley and everybody else wants to. Join on in and. Make it happen.
I, Beth, from the from the county's perspective. And I'll speak as the board chair, just Steve here, I I believe. Our commitment uh. Came a couple of years ago when we decided to hire a full-time economic development coordinator. And so. Our part of our commitment is um. We've got this young lady sitting right here. Who we have directed to do what she can to help economic development growth in Pine County. I don't know where on earth we would find somebody. Uh, to come in. That already owns a piece of property. That says. We want to build. An industrial park. In Pine County. And and so. All we have to do is figure out how to get a road system to it. And figure out how to get the infrastructure to it. Uh, it's a pretty good start. Uh, you know, most, most places come and say. We'd like to build something here. Do you have any land? Could you give us some land? Could you give us uh, something? Cause we'll build it if you give it to us. Uh, we already have a business partner that has the land and. And so I I I think we're. We're way ahead of the game. And I and I thank you for that, I thank your your. Community for that.
Well, you couldn't have got a better economic development person than Leslie, she's fantastic.
We we agree.
We we agree, so.
Oh, Mister Chair.
Just wait, Josh is going ahead of you, JJ.
I do think also. As far as the, as far as the property goes, is one thing, but I think looking at it from even a county perspective. No matter what we. Roads. Will be tremendously uh, helpful to the area. Whether or not you did an interchange, you did something with twenty three. You did anything there, anybody that has. Gone through that. Interchange in Hinckley knows that it's, the other day I was going through there in a semi, just parked right in the middle of the road to go to the gas station. On the east side of the of the or on the west side of the.
Yeah.
Freeway there, I mean, it's it's and I get it, but uh, it's like, but.
I don't.
I mean. It's a huge issue. Uh, in the area, um, and I think to to further expand it or. And I think the real, there's a real potential there, so that's what I'm excited about is the trying to figure out something to do with the road system. Guy of blowing that whole intersection up and starting over.
It's not gonna happen either.
JJ, go ahead.
Yeah, Steve, you just said the, what I gather from down there, you're speaking for the board, I guess. Don't speak for me, I'll I'll, I got my own take on it, I I own. I thirty-five property and and for somebody to, for you to say somebody already has land and and willing to come up and develop that. Don't we have a? Business park right next to the. Courthouse where you're sitting right now and what's the vacancy rate of that? Uh, Sandstone also, do they have freeway property available, I understand, right next to a hospital that's. Already has all the infrastructure. Uh, I know there's other stuff in the works also, but um.
I believe Pine City.
There's a lot of other, there's a lot of other, there's a lot of other opportunities out there also that. That are sitting, that were developed, that are. Again, that phrase shovel ready. And uh, how are those sitting? How are those getting promoted? How are those getting marketed? Why isn't anybody, why is somebody then come up there when there's already one sitting ready right now? What I would consider a better location. It's my comments. Thank you.
Mister Chair, I think I could answer your questions, some of them, um. Yes, the Pine City Technology Park does have land available, there's a three acre parcel, a seven acre parcel. And then a kind of swampy forty acre parcel, um, all of it has access to fiber and sewer and water, um. Right now, it's difficult to acquire because it has not been plotted properly, but that is in the works to make it better. It is marketed statewide, nationwide as part of the shovel-ready program, um, Sandstone's Business Park. Is also being actively marketed. Um, anecdotally, I can say that when those parcels are offered. Um, many businesses feel it is just a smidge too far north. Um, for their liking, so that that's about the only negative about Sandstone's Business Park is it's just about. Fifteen minutes further than they want to go, so I think Hinckley is a prime. Location to have some land available and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know if you guys have a shovel-ready. Site and I think the one that you do have left in the park. Is currently privately owned and.
Yes, so. We have limited industrial space available. The 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 lot you mentioned is privately owned, we've. Tried to help. Market that property with very limited success uh, in that area. So um, we don't have. What would be considered shovel-ready. Um, um, manufacturing or industrial sites. Actually available at this time.
And um. We are competing with our neighbors to the north and south, um, and I know. Maybe Mark, you could back me up on this if you want or not, um, we compete with North Branch and Cambridge, which have higher populations than we do. Um, so we're we're more of selling our lifestyle when when it comes to having land available. Um, but yeah, I hope I answered most of your questions, but that is where this project kind of piqued my interest is that. Um. You know, it it could, it could provide that niche that some of these businesses are looking for. Outside of the metro.
I'm sorry, if you're referring to my question, Jay, you missed the one of the the land right next to the. Right next to the courthouse there, cause there is still land available there, and thank you for bringing up North Branch, that's sitting uh, right on I thirty-five and if. Sandstone is fifteen minutes too far north, I guess. If I were to be getting in business, I would be aggressively looking at North Branch then, which also has the rail line right there and. The signs are there, it's next to Viking Coca-Cola, it's next to St. Croix Stoneworks. And uh, they're having a tough time. Moving that land.
Yep. Um, are you referring to the city's shovel-ready land right here, or are you referring to the privately owned next to the courthouse, just south of the courthouse?
Yeah, right next to the courthouse, so land's land to me. It's for sale and I was just saying, I guess I don't care who I'm buying it from.
Yeah, um, I know that I've. Tried to connect prospective businesses with that broker several times, I think it's the. The wetland that exists on the property that deters people from it, I think there's a big pond in the middle of it. Um, and then the price. The price is often what. Has people not picking up the property here. In particular, the one on the corner, um, that we were trying to actively get a hotel developer for, the price was just too high.
Pond would be beautiful in front of a hotel.
Other questions?
I have a comment, um, so I was at the Johnson Training.
Yep.
Um, on Friday and they were talking and the the biggest growing counties right now is Shasago and Iyani. Are two of them, and so just being on the edge of that, we know that it's coming.
Right.
Know, and so if it's coming, we want to do this so that we do it properly and it's it's done the right way. And I really appreciate, um, Corporate Ventures has put a lot of work into this and a lot of thought process and. You know, hiring somebody to come in and take a look at it to find out if this is really something that is sustainable. Um, I just really appreciate. You guys, Beth, you and Dustin and every, all the work that you've done on this and um. It it is, like you said, it's years out in the future, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, but it's it's such a good start to see where we can go and to be. At the table with the City of Hinckley. Is great, you know, because then we can get all of our our. Pins in a bucket and we can find out where we're at and how we can help each other. To make it a better area, not just for Hinckley or but for the residents of Pine County.
Anything else?
Thank you, Commissioner Luckren.
Beth, do we have anything else or Leslie that we wanted to? Cover today on this?
I have nothing more.
I thank you very much and John, thanks for taking the time to come up here and and meet with us and explain that. Uh, a great report, it was a, it was a. Was a lot to read.
June was not the right month to do that though, it would have been July on a really good concert night.
Could have had more failure to celebrate.
Yeah. Yeah, it it's, you know, I've seen it where the backup traffic has gone all the way down to twenty-three. Just to get off, to go. Yeah. I don't know if they're going to St. Croix Park or if they're going to the casino or if they're going to Danbury, I don't know, but it it gets crazy. So.
Well, again, there's a lot of work to do, but I think you're really well positioned right now, I think the relationship with Mindot is very positive. But they're not gonna lead it. I mean, they're they'll they'll continue to communicate with you, but. I think to take advantage of that goodwill, you're gonna need to continue to. Be the lead.
It's always hard to speak for. The council because everybody's got different personalities and ideas. But I I really believe that the City of Hinckley would be in full support also of this project, I mean, why wouldn't you be? It it just makes sense for the community, um, we enjoy working with Beth, we've, you know, we're in contact with her a lot and. Uh. I I I just would show our support. For the project also.
Thanks, guys, thank. Thanks for coming down and. Throwing your two cents in.
Yeah, I'm looking for change out of that.
Okay. Good, I could.
Thank you, um, Chair Holland and Commissioners and Mayor Zeeman, we, Leslie and David um, and Mark, I'll be in touch with. Kind of, uh, maybe we can gather up to talk about next steps and um, how we continue engaging with Mindot and. Um, continuing down this, we we call it the Seven Generation Project because it it's going to be a long time, but. We're excited about the possibilities and working together.
Look forward to it, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Great presentation, thank you.
Thanks, Mark LeBron for being on board too. Alright, we'll move on to recycling. And solid waste management. Guys, you guys wanna come closer on this one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright. Will you yell at me if you got something to say? Alright. Caleb.
Yes, sir. I'm Caleb Anderson, uh, the Land and Resources Manager in the Planning, Zoning and Solid Waste Department. So. In twenty twenty-one, uh, well, we've got a, we've got a long history with our our county recycling program. It it goes back a couple decades, um, it's changed quite a bit um, over the last few years. We were working with Faze for several years, uh, out of Sandstone, they were providing jobs to uh, disadvantaged populations. Um, out of Sandstone, it was a great uh, relationship with those folks. They um, there, we had about a dozen sites across the county. And one thing, there's been tremendous change in the recycling industry where prices have come down considerably. Mostly due to China not no longer accepting or buying recycled material out of out of the United States. So um. Across the country, over the last five years, there's been a shrinking of market. Markets for recycled product, um, and communities across the country have. Um, responded by pulling back on the size of their programs, um, as they're suddenly subsidizing to pick up the uh. The they added the expense of. Of running the program when there's less revenue to be had on the material itself, so we kind of mimicked what was over the last few years, what's been happening through the country. By going from twelve recycling sites down to five. And it's been a painful process, um, people, it's never popular. To close a recycling site, um, one of the, so, one of the main things we've looked at over the last few years is. We were almost primarily unstaffed recycling sites. And we've shifted to primarily staff where we're not taking garbage, our recycling is clean. Where it has more value. Um, and uh, we've been working with a new contractor um, on the recycling program out of Cloquet. Who doesn't have quite the same social mission as Faze where and therefore um, also not. Uh, revenue sources outside of recycling, where it's really got to stand on its own two legs, so. We're in a position now, uh, two years into the contract where the 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 recycling company has has. Decided not to renew the contract. Um, they, we reopen it for bids, we only got one bid. Um, they chose to separate the cost of Bruno site just because the Bruno site is. The only unstaffed site, therefore it's the most costly, there's the most contamination. Uh, there's the poorest sorting of the recycling work, the other sites, we have staff who are kind of helping make sure it all look, it all is a clean product. So one of the differences in the Bruno site, it is, it is our only site up in northeast Pine County. Um, we did a little GIS analysis and there's about a thousand homes. Kind of from Askov to Nickerson along that twenty-three corridor extending uh, towards the interstate and. So there's about a thousand homes, there's quite a bit of population spread over a decently large area, so. As you're all aware, we approved the contract um, in January to include the Bruno site, but we had a conversation about, okay, what can we do differently? Because as it stands, uh, the the contract is outside of our twenty twenty-two budget, twenty twenty-three budget, excuse me. Um, so. As directed by the board, I. I worked with Kelly and David to do a little bit of research and explore some different options. And um, in the board packet, I put four different options, um. Essentially, the first one is no change, we we could continue as contracted with the Bruno site intact. Will be thirty-one thousand dollars and eight hundred, thirty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-one over budget and those. That deficit will be have to be solved somewhere within the solid waste and county budget, if that, um. The second option would be. To coordinate a contract amendment to eliminate the Bruno site, we're a few months in. So we'd still be a little bit over budget, but and there's a ninety-day cancellation clause where we, we don't have to see the contract through through December. We could do that, um. That would be one option to soften soften that budget deficit. But um, then the kind of the research where we try to get creative, that would be at options three and four. One of the suggestions when we met in January was, you know, is there another hauler up there that we can work with that's already working in the community? That could maybe there'd be a some. Third-party arrangement for hauling. So there's, I I did look into this and there's two garbage haulers, one is Mike Sanitation out of Sturgeon Lake. Um. Um, I called them and they just, they don't handle recycling. Um, it's a whole nother route to run a truck to Bruno. Um, and that was just not something that they were interested in. Um, the other one was Matt Sanitation and again, it's kind of. A deadhead route, you know, up to Bruno and back from their shop in Hinckley and then they don't. They don't market the recycling. They 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 bring it to another contractor in Pine County where it. There, so it changes hands a few times before it actually gets to a sorting facility. So there's just not a lot of garbage haulers there and there's not a lot of recycling. And I think if if the private market. Found it, you know, cost-effective, viable to recycle, we wouldn't have to have this program. But the reality is it um it just isn't a valuable enough material to have that. That benefit for business, local businesses. So that's why the county has the program.
Mr. Chair, have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Got a question for you. Um, did you try Nordstrom sanitation right from the Moose Lake area? Cause they also have a. Recycling center right there. Uh, I'm sure you're familiar with it.
Yeah.
Did you, did you try them at all to see?
No, that would be a good, another good one to try. Um.
Yes, it would be.
Passed about cardboard. One thing I just that each of them has talked about and even our current contractor is. There is a glut of cardboard right now and it it wouldn't be. It it's can be, it's not a great idea for anybody to bring cardboard because there's nowhere to put it. So they're um, they're kind of, they're backlogging cardboard right now. Um, so that's kind of what I've been hearing. But that that would be another phone call that could be made. Um.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That was, that's a good suggestion.
So. Oh, yeah, the, let's just pretend something here. Pretend we just said, well. Let's not, let's not, what, let's just offer a garbage place. How much would it cost to haul the garbage out of there?
Good question. So we'd have a a kind of a designated area for the public to bring their garbage in at the same site? Is that what you're saying?
Is there in, is there, is there a garbage service in Bruno?
Yeah.
Those two companies I just.
They they both service Bruno.
Yeah.
And are you, you're not talking about a staff site, Steve? Or are you talking about a staff site?
No, just put a big roll off or something there and have them come and haul it away because of. The problem with the recycling, from what I understand, is it, it's contaminated, so. They, it either, they either they have to sort it and get, it's costing them a lot of money. Or it has to go as garbage anyway.
Right.
But then I suppose if you put a garbage container there, then the garbage haulers would lose all their customers and everybody just.
Right. And the, it still takes babysitting to make sure the recycling goes in the right spot, even at some of our. Uh, staff centers, it takes constant attention to make sure that the garbage is not in the recycling.
Even the person just standing out there makes it happen.
Sure.
What I mean, just the. People pay attention to what they're doing.
They tell me, though, even if they're there, people still.
What I've seen, it's, it helps when they're there.
It helps, but they still.
Yeah, they still have to correct.
Hey Caleb, I got another question for you if I can. Mr. Chair. Yeah, just on, I mean, all of our last conversations about the Bruno Recycling Center and then, you know, how the city was. Ultimately made aware of the drastic changes up there. Uh, seeing the representation of Hinckley here today was what we talked about with what was going on down in Hinckley. Have you been in contact? Did you give the Bruno uh City Council any, any chance to sit at the table to help discuss the?
Right here.
Situation?
They're sitting right here.
I guess I can't see which one. That's great. I'm thank, thank you. Cause the last time we talked about this, I know uh. You know, I just felt that they weren't represented adequately, so that's great that they're there. Anything that they can offer, certainly I help. I I know with Finlayson, that was a big discussion with uh. Like Caleb, you just mentioned, I thought it was you with people putting things in the wrong bin and the trash and the, I mean, everybody's got. Everybody's got to do their best to make this thing work and just want to make sure everybody's represented, you know.
Is your microphone under something or something or?
No, I haven't got these high-tech little gadgets.
It's, it's like it's over being overdriven.
I'll uh, I'll check with Ryan. He, Ryan's been helping me a little bit here with other stuff. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, so what, how much does it cost us to run the year out? You know, do you have that number? Okay, I don't have that.
The whole program?
Yeah, if we ran this year out.
It's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. With Bruno now.
And and that's what we're spending?
That's what we were contracted to spend this year.
Yeah, okay. And we, and we stayed, we we stay on board until when?
Through, well, it's a five-year contract.
Oh, but we can end it whenever. So, but.
A ninety-day notice.
Yeah, so. How many people do you think use that site? I mean, just guess. Well, Asco isn't driving north. They're probably going to Sandstone.
Right.
Do you want to come up to the table so you're talking in a microphone and then DJ?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What what I'm trying to figure out, Doug, is there a way we can phase it out and help people adjust? Cause. I'll just think what I'm thinking, or say what I'm thinking. It might not be right, but. The people in the area have to go shop somewhere for groceries, right? So could we figure out a way that we could keep this in place until people figure out how when they they can store enough? So when they go to Sandstone for groceries or Moose Lake that they can drop it there. I mean, is that something that could happen? Cause it's costing the taxpayers a lot of money.
I get that. And what, looking at the the figures, I understand that it's really cost prohibitive. I mean, I really like having the the facility there and the biggest reason is because. And I think I said the last, at the last meeting I was at, on the weekends, you know, your other facilities are open really limited hours. And it really kind of forces people to, you know, plan their day around it where they can just show up on Sunday and drop their garbage and stuff and that. It's, there's people coming in there all the time on Sunday doing that.
I get that. So how could, I'm trying to, how could we, yeah, I don't want, I don't know what the, how can we shift? And make it easy for you people and the taxpayer. That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. And I think we all are.
You know, can I, can I go on that? I think of an eighty-four year, eighty-four-year-old lady that lives way out past Cloverdale. And that's what she has to do, you know, because Hinckley doesn't have one anymore either. So for her, she goes grocery shopping in Sandstone. Takes all of recycling to the recycling shed up there. Um, you know, and she's eighty-four and I watch her do it and I think, wow, you know, I mean, that. That says something to me. So it it's doable to do it that way.
So, so here's what I'm getting at. So if we stay, we're going to end this contract, we got, we got to give them ninety days anyway. So you got, is three months enough to ship? I mean, how do we get that message out to your people that it's going to be closing? Or do they need us to go longer? I don't know. I just. And how much can?
I don't, yeah, I think you're probably going to end up with fifty percent of them that are going to ship and then fifty percent of them that are just going to. Put it in the garbage. They're not going to recycle anymore.
Yeah.
Um, I know Jer- Jerry Krueger's with me. He's from the township and he picks up for Evelyn Orchard. Who is ninety-two or something and she can't do it herself. She, and he takes her recycling up to Bruno. Well, that's not going to happen anymore. She's just going to throw in the garbage and that's what's going to happen. The other fear that I have is it's going to go on the ditches. They're going to just start throwing it out. We've had that issue before up in Bruno. They're so far out and, you know, I mean, I picked up garbage off my property, my hunting property. And I think you're just going to see more of that. But, excuse me, um. I understand. And I think maybe if you wanted to give it six months and notify people and, I mean, if you're going to do it, then you better. Give them at least six months or something or I guess.
Here's what I'm wondering, Caleb. We used to pay more than this to face. And then, and then it went down and then it crept back up. But it's still less than we used to pay. Right? So. Maybe we. Maybe we. Run this year out for sure. And. You know, it's.
The taxpayers are spending a lot of money, you know.
But, but here's the deal, we.
Then we have to give an ending.
We.
What's going to happen?
But, but Matt, we're, we're collecting. Roughly ten thousand dollars from those thousand homeowners.
I know.
You know? And, and so if we look at, if we look at our. You know, we're, we're collecting money.
We'll have to stop that in those places probably, right?
I don't think so. I I I say, we used to spend a hundred and forty-some thousand.
Hundred and seventy-eight.
Hundred and seventy-eight thousand. We look, we got it, a contract that and we eliminated a bunch of sites and now it went up. And we're picking on Bruno. As.
I I understand. I don't want to pick on Bruno, but we do.
But, but, but we are. And I'm saying if we look at the overall cost of the thing. We're still. Forty thousand dollars less than we used to be three years ago.
Mr. Chair? Can I ask a question of Caleb? So of the cost to service the Bruno site. It has the highest level of contaminated recycling, right? Is, is that the driving factor to the cost or is it just having to get to Bruno to service the site?
It's just the contamination is the biggest problem. Cause they go through there anyway, right?
Yeah, it's the amount of time to go through those sheds. Cause at the other sites, there's more space and they're using uh dumpsters. So it's a garbage truck that comes through. It's, it's much more labor-intensive. They do have a route that this truck is running on.
So I'm, I'm just wondering if there is any way to improve the site in a way that would reduce the cost. And maybe, and I'm thinking adding security. There's finding, building a fence or something so that. There could be limited access, right? It wasn't just a free-for-all. And then somebody locally could have a little bit of of onus to lock and unlock during open times. If that, if that reduces the cost twenty percent, does that move the needle enough to say it's, it's more cost-effective? Part of the problem with the contamination, I was going to speak to that too, is when Faze had it, we always just, you know, we've been taught. You know, the floor on the back of the plastic, we can bring anything we wanted. All they want now is bottles and everything else goes in the garbage. And I think that the, I mean, yeah, it's written there, but how many people read what's written there? They come, they dump their stuff in. And it's just all the plastic things that they recycle.
There are so many plastics.
Right, but this company doesn't want a lot of that stuff. Yeah, you're, you still have the garbage that they're dumping up there and I see that and it, it breaks my heart because I wish there was a way we could solve that. But you're always going to have one percent that are going to abuse the system, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you, Doug. Um, you brought up something that, oh, first of all, don't believe everything you see on Facebook. I do know that, but one of the things that I saw on Facebook. Said, and I've had questions about it, is that um a lot of people are recycling stuff and it costs more money actually to recycle than it does. If people would just throw their stuff in the garbage. Because a lot of the stuff that we are recycling are those things that we are told that they are recyclable and they're really not. Um, so that's a question that I have too, is how much of that, you know, um.
That's, that's a, something that I think the industry struggles with as markets, you know, open and close for different products. It's really hard to train the public. So you can't, okay, suddenly we don't have a buyer for, for X product. It's really hard to just say, okay, we're not accepting that because we want everything to be recycled. So I think there's has to be some consistency of messaging. But I know in our particular case, and and most of the country is operating single-stream recycling, all commingled. That goes through a mechanized facility and gets separated and it's a lower quality product. One of the things that I really like about our program is that we're working with a local company that markets each individual product itself. It doesn't go through a mechanized facility. So we know what they can and cannot recycle and everything, all of the accepted products that we take are being recycled.
Yeah, because they said that they only wanted the, the cans and the pucks and the glass is all that they can really use right now.
So and each community and market will have a different local message to that effect and. A different buyer, you know?
Thank you.
I'm interested.
The other thing that happens, Terry, is. The haulers, when they haul a load of garbage to the landfill, they pay sixty-some dollars a ton to dump it. When they haul recycling. Most of the products they haul to the MRF. There, if they have to pay a tipping fee. It's, it's way, way less than the tipping fee at the landfill. Or in most cases, they get paid, like even, even in a, right now cardboard they can't get rid of. But last spring, they made a boat load of money on cardboard that they had warehoused for the last couple of years. Because that market goes like this and like this and like this. So they hauled semi-load after semi-load uh and got money for it. The, the other, the other side of this coin is we're. You right now have to fill out our goal volume tables. Okay, which, which that means we, every county in the state of Minnesota gets scored. On. How many pounds the average person of garbage gets generated? And how many pounds that we send to a recycling facility? And then there's a calculation that's made and it's called your score funds and we get money back. Based on that calculation. I think that the state has our. Population wrong, but. Have to deal with that. But how much do we get back every year? Seventy thousand?
It's a little over eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand bucks for recycling. So that's why I'm. I'm saying it's, it, it's a cost of doing business. But it's a, it's part of Pine County. Bruno is part of Pine County. And we are committed to doing recycling in Pine County. I'm sticking up for Bruno. And saying, and saying, you know, just because they're an outlier. And it, and to get that from them is going to cost us more money. I think we're all in this together. We're Pine County. And, and if we start doing that, then pretty soon we're going to say, well, let's not spend any money on the gravel. In that whole bunch of townships up there. Let's not, we don't need, because they only got this much of a population.
I don't think that'll ever.
Well, I, I'm just saying, I.
Honestly figure out how to get rid of garbage. That's all.
It, but, but we're in this recycling thing together.
Yeah.
And, and.
I don't want to get rid of it either. I just wonder how we can do it.
I, I, just because it costs more to get rid of it in Northeast Pine County than it does in Pine City. I, I think we owe it to the, those thousand homes up there to offer recycling. For as long as humanly possible.
So I'd like to say, uh, kind of echoing on that is, is recycling. Um, if it was, if it was cost-effective, we would be in the private industry, we'd be in the business. It's not, just like roads are not cost-effective, just like pretty much everything the county does is not a money-making affair. Um, but it, it is a service that we provide. My question on the backside is, I, I don't think you ever got to four, which was expanding to everybody's home. And or what are we really kept getting out of a whole county? Is there something we can do better? Countywide, um, if we're spending this money to do it, you know, we have, we have talked, I. Obviously, they don't have curbside recycling. If, if a guy, we don't subsidize any of it on the southern end, correct? Or anywhere else?
No, we don't.
Um, and do most people in that area have curbside garbage or is that a very low take rate as a well?
You have it here.
Yeah, I think it goes all the way up.
We don't have it.
Yeah.
I hope it's pretty much the Pine City area. There's a little bit up in Sturgeon Lake area. Um, so I guess the garbage collection, we, so the option four was. At what point does it make sense to go to a curbside pickup of recycling if um, if that would be better? Um, and we just, we, I bounced the idea off our contractor and it would, it would add a lot of cost. Um, you'd have to put some of the. Um, you'd have to put some of the cost onto the homeowners. But one of the challenges you, going into it, you know, your question, exactly how many of them have garbage service? You wouldn't wanna give a recycling bin to someone who didn't have a garbage bin, because then you know what you'd have in that. So, it almost, it exacerbates the budget issue to go to that level, um, it becomes a more global um, discussion for the whole program throughout the county.
And, and to just kind of piggyback on that a little bit is, is my, you know, I don't, I honestly, I don't have curbside recycling either, but, uh, uh, I don't know if it costs extra or not, that would be something.
Yeah, it costs, it costs us like, I don't know, two and a half or three dollars a month.
Okay.
I don't think we even have a choice.
And if we, if we subsidize it as a whole, on the whole county, you know, granted, if you lived in that area, you have curbside garbage, I mean, that would be obviously a requirement. You know, whatever the hauler would suggest, you know, would add to, add recycling. And if we just said, I'm just throwing a dumb number, two, three, four, five bucks per, per, uh, per stop across the whole county, because that, that's other thing I could see where businesses down here would be like, hey, help me subsidize them. So, just a thought, but definitely, I don't, I'm kind of with Steve on this as far as, for now, maybe we look at keeping it the way it is.
For a year, I am too, I stay working, but we have to keep sinking.
I think there's something we can do better. I don't, I don't think we're doing the greatest job recycling, even with what we're doing.
Oh, I, I agree. I, I think, I.
And, and you always, on the landfill committee, so it's cheaper today, but tomorrow, digging new holes and, and opening new landfills, is that?
We're gonna be going out for bid in a, in a year, and I'm sure the next three million bucks.
I've really struggled with, so I live just north of the county line in Carlton County, where they have unstaffed recycling centers, and they're not abused. And we've had such a major abuse issue with all our unstaffed recycling centers. One of the differences that I see up there is they don't use sheds, they use a small garage, twenty-four by twenty-eight, whatever it is, that there's automatic lights on when you come in. One of the things I've heard, and, and a camera system. One of the things I've heard about, uh, our sheds is after dark, no one wants to go climb into that dingy shed and sort out their recycling, so it just makes much cleaner experience. Um, and which, going that direction requires kind of then saying, okay, let's invest in this. And, but just the same with, when it, when it's gone so poorly at our unstaffed sites, I still don't have confidence that that would take care of it.
And that was kind of the David's, the David's.
Improvements to be.
Yeah, and that, and that, that doesn't seem like a huge, I mean, it is an investment, but I didn't.
You're not talking like a huge.
I'm talking about a garage, like residential sized garage.
Yeah.
Your chair?
Yeah.
Um, we, we're working so hard to get.
Well, through the, uh, the, sorry.
Just wait.
We're, we're working so hard to get broadband and emergency services to everybody in our county, I think that this is something that we don't wanna stop providing for somebody just because of the area that they live, I think it's, it's one for all. But I, I support keeping Bruno and seeing where we can go from there, you know? Um, I know last year we talked in January about, um, checking with some other counties that have recycling facilities that pick up every week or every month or whatever, and, um, I think that that kind of got dropped, but maybe that's someplace that we want to go, is to see if we wanted to do that. Is it where your brother lives that they do that?
They, they, where my brother lives, you pay about a hundred and fifty bucks a year on your taxes, and you have a place in every township to, to go take your garbage, your recycling, your everything. They're abused also.
Right.
And the township has some skin in the game, you know, in every little city, because they gotta deal with the, they gotta closure, fence, but it's not perf, nothing's perfect.
What do you think, Doug?
As far as what we should do?
Yeah.
I'm really interested in what Caleb was saying about that, a shed that had a light and a camera in it, where people are gonna, I mean, I know the facility in Bruno has cameras on the county building, but they can't see what the people are doing there, really. But I think something that was monitored like that electronically could possibly work, especially if, I mean, I, I guess we'd have to really try and sell it that way, but I think it would work. I mean, it, it's better than what they're doing right now, like you say, they're, they're really dark and dingy, there's no lighting in them, so people don't wanna do much over, they just toss their stuff in there, every time I go in there, I see glass in the plastic, and of course, I'm sorting it out because that goes against my nature, but, you know, there's only so much I can do. I did have one other question, was what's the volume, Bruno? How much, do you know how much there is there? Is there a lot? Or, I mean, every time I go in there, there's, every bag is full, and if there's stuff on the floor, because there's no room for anything else.
Our recycling contractor, they don't collect data at each individual site, because it all kind of goes on a truck, so it's hard to do that, but he estimates that based on the volume, that there's probably two hundred and forty homes using it. That's the only feedback to that effect I got.
That, that's pretty good if there's a thousand homes.
Like I say, if they pick up every week, and if you get in there on a Monday, and they're picking up on Tuesday, and everything's full, it's, it's doing its purpose, I mean, it's serving its purpose.
So, we have Jeanette online too. Jeanette, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Jeanette is the clerk.
Who were you asking?
Jeanette, she's online, um, she joined us too, and she, she joined us last time when we discussed this. I just wonder if she had anything that she.
Well, here, here's what I'm hearing, Caleb, we're, we're, we're saying forge ahead as we have for this year, but we are committed to looking at some, we expect they, you or your staff, or somebody's gonna come with some alternatives to say, here's something for X amount of dollars, we can try in Bruno, and see if it works. And if that happens in June or July or September, uh, and, and we think that might work, let's give it a shot. Fair?
That's kind of where I was at anyway, I don't know.
All right.
What do you, you, you don't think it's viable, or?
Well, no, I think it's viable, it's just the, how do you train people not to put garbage in? That's what's causing the problem.
I know.
And then so, I, and I say, if we get the same people who are recycling, if they're gonna go grocery shopping, they bring their recycling, you're still gonna then get clothes, you won't get garbage, but those recyclers will still go someplace and get rid of it. That's what I, and I don't know if that's the right answer, but that was just, but that's a transition time. I think that both people will still recycle.
I think one thing, one thing we have found out from our site in Willa River and here, is there's a limit. I don't care how much of a recycler you are, there's a limit to how far you're gonna go, you know?
We've gotten a lot of that feedback when we've closed sites.
You got it from me when you closed secretly, no.
But you can still go to the transfer station.
Do you have a lot of self haulers up there for garbage?
Self haulers.
You mean?
Substation.
Yeah, I think there's a few. I don't know, it seems like, I think it's Mike's sanitation, he put two trucks into Bruno now, because he has so many pickups.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well, I think Donna sanitation, she went out and Mike took over that, but there's two trucks every Monday that are in Bruno, so they have quite a bit of pickup there, so.
Well, that okay?
Yeah, thank you.
We live with that?
Sure, thanks very much.
Thanks for coming down, guys.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, you guys, for coming up.
Thank you.
Land advisory.
Land advisory, Matt, Terry, I don't know if you wanna take it?
Who's gonna start here?
Greg wanna kick it up for me?
Well, I do not have any of the minutes or any, uh.
No, I forgot to bring it.
Or any, oh, there we go, thank you.
Wait, you need a mic though.
Think he shut it off.
Yeah.
It tapped. Oh, like this. All right. So, um, at our land advisory committee, um, this, uh, early March, uh, it was typically, uh, to, uh, get together to, uh, discuss our, um, and approve the upcoming land auction and, and the parcels that we were to sell. Um, in that, as part of the, uh, process of it, we have on, on our, uh, agenda here that there's, uh, a few resolutions that get passed, and this is all standard, we do this every year. Uh, this year, uh, without having everything right handy, we do, I believe we're gonna offer eight hundred and seventy acres, eight hundred and forty acres and acreage and new parcels. And we had, um, we had about three or four that we still have on hand that we were not and haven't sold, and we're gonna reoffer them. But, um, part of the process is that, uh, the new parcels that we will be offering, we classify those as non-conservation, it's state statute, and then at that point, the, uh, the, the department of natural resources reviews those parcels as well as.
Right there, your hands on it right now.
As well as the cities and townships, they review the parcels for, uh, sale. Um, so that is part of the first, one of the, one of the resolutions that you have, it's, uh, identifies the parcels that are new on the list and have not been offered before. Um, also, there's a resolution there to withdraw the sales from last year, as well as we have, oh, probably maybe, maybe a dozen or so parcels from, um, past auctions of non-conforming lots, those are small parcels. Uh, they're best suited for an adjoining landowner to purchase. Uh, those parcels are typically offered on a sealed bid, we have a handful of those that we would like to withdraw, reevaluate them, and then reoffer those. Also, um, as part of the land sale program, uh, and tax forfeitures, parcels that are non-homesteaded, those parcels have six months after forfeiture for the previous owner to come forward and do what's called repurchase to retain their properties, and essentially buy the title back from the state of Minnesota. Um, state statute says that homestead properties, as well as contract restatements, they have up to the time that the county sells the property. And the Department of Revenue understands that that can be a bit of a hassle. So they have, you know, instead of offering it up to the day of the auction, and having somebody come in and purchase it, they, they've made, uh, uh, regulations so that a county board can set the date for when the, the, uh, sales are determined to be sold, and or a specific amount of days. So what we've done, and we, we, we started this a few years ago, that it's, uh, just before the county board meeting approving that, and that, uh, that gives the, uh, county auditor's office time to collect the, uh, the re, the, uh, repurchase monies or the contract re- statements, and then get it onto the county board agenda for the upcoming meeting, at which time also the, uh, land auction is approved. So, I believe those are the three the, the three resolutions pertaining to our land auction, that, uh, that are part of this package, I'll, I'll leave the remaining mo, maybe the Kelly can touch on that after we talk about our land auctions. Um, one of the discussions that we had also at our land advisory committee meeting was to address whether, um, retaining public lands, tax forfeit lands, or sales of them. And I don't know if I should turn this over to, uh, do you wanna to talk about this, or should I continue on a little bit?
Or does anybody have any questions at this point?
Yeah, it might, that might be.
The only question I have is, uh, when I was reading through my pocket, do, do we make the resolutions today, or do we do that next week at the meeting?
You can do them today.
We can do them today, okay.
We were gonna do, um, at the land meeting, which we normally do do, but because, um, JJ had asked some questions about it, we decided that we'd have conversation and then do it today.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Greg, I think you should, I think Greg should say what he thinks about his selling, you know, the tax forfeit.
Okay.
Yeah, you're our forestry guy, so.
Yeah, um, yeah, I guess I didn't identify myself either for, for this conversation, but yeah, Greg Beck, uh, land commissioner and county forester. So, um, what, what occurred probably around twenty-ten, was recorded twenty-eleven, was the establishment of the first board resolution creating our county memorial forest system. I believe we've had three other, two other resolutions since to add, add additional acreage to that. And the purpose of that at the very beginning was not so much to retain of a lot of prop, to retain properties, that was part of it. But at that time, there was no process or guidance to the management of how we were going to sell these properties, so, um, at that point, it really depended who was in the driver's seat. And in the past, some individuals wanted to keep all, everything, and then there were others that wanted to maybe sell a little bit more. So, instead of having one or two people guide the, the process, it not only was a, uh, um, a classification in the memorial forest to, uh, retain properties, but also to sell properties. It wasn't just to establish a memorial forest, that was part of the guidance to all, take a look at all of our properties. So at that time, I believe we had around forty-eight thousand acres, and these are just gonna be real general numbers, of tax forfeited properties, and at that time, we looked at five criteria, one of them being large acreage, access, uh, timber potential, uh, public use potential, and I might be missing, oh, environmental uniqueness. I believe those were the five, and if three of them qualified, then we, that was a candidate to put into the memorial forest status. And one of the things about the tax forfeited properties, it's almost like a shotgun blast. You have like your high concentrations, and then you have scattered pellets. And a lot of those scattered parcels, and some of them were of large acreage, didn't fit into those. So out of that forty-eight thousand acres, uh, thirty-six thousand were identified to be retained and put into memorial forest status, uh, for public use and for forest management. And pretty much the remainder, twelve thousand acres, was determined for, uh, private sales on our land auctions, and, uh, not to sell them all at once, but to, uh, sell somewhere around seven hundred to a thousand acres a year. And that's the history of why our memorial forests were established. And it, and it went through, uh, went through our advisory committee to be reviewed as well as others. And that's where we sit today. Um, there's a couple different, uh, ideas behind public land. Uh, some would like to, uh, to, uh, put it all into private ownerships, and then, uh, there are others that see the value behind it, it's not always just about, uh, what, you know, financially these lands are worth, but that they have other values as well. That's where we're at today, uh. Any comments or questions?
So, if I remember, we, we have sold roughly ten thousand acres in the last uh, twelve years.
That's pretty safe to say, we're at the tail, we're, we're coming to the tail end of our land sale program, which was generated at that time. And the, uh, with the establishment of the memorial forest system, which I believe was twenty-ten, no, twenty-eleven, I think is when it was finalized. Kelly put together a graph that showed, that shows the, uh,
It's page, yes, in the back.
Yeah, that shows the acreage of, of the tax forfeited memorial forest lands for tax forfeit acreages. And you can see at twenty-eleven on the graph that there is a sh, a sharp decrease.
You got it on page, yeah, page three of your.
Oh, that's not the, okay, there was a.
Three or four.
Is this one that you emailed?
Yeah, the top one there.
Yeah, the top one. This one.
Oh, it's a little different than what I saw earlier, but there's a remarkable change in the acreage after twenty-eleven, decreasing as it was designed to do. But, um, in, in our, in our conversation at our advisory committee, um, this, um, the, uh, the establishment of our memorial forest acreage and where we're going to go with that in the future, it's not static, I mean, that, we did discuss that it, it should be open for review on, on occasion. And whether that would be to increase it or to decrease it, that was one of the, uh, discussions that we had, that it should go under a review on occasion.
You, you don't happen to have uh, off the top of your head, of a corresponding gra, uh, indicator of timber sales off of those memorial forest lands over the years, over since two thousand eleven, let's say.
Yeah, there was, there was a point that, um, Kelly probably has something, but, um, depending how far back you wanna go, we had what we uh, was considered our sustained yield, and that was based on, oh, you know, maybe thirty thousand acres of Aspen cover type that we had. And in the forestry world, you have your, your age that you cut it at, your, your prime age, and we determined at that point was fifty years of age, so um, it was pro, approximately five hundred and fifty acres that we were selling of Aspen a year. And then we went through an allowable, or, or in a, in a, in an increased cut, which would have been about twenty, two thousand two to probably two thousand eight, where we we harvested about fifteen thousand acres a year, or fifteen hundred acres, I'm sorry, fifteen hundred acres a year. And then since it's gone down to probably about three hundred and fifty acres a year, because we just don't have the resource like we had before. But I don't have those numbers to.
Yeah, I have twenty sixteen through twenty twenty, the average for those years was three hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Okay, thank you.
It's the average total proceeds of the timber sales.
Right, from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, I haven't pulled the twenty-one or twenty-two.
Where are we in the maturation of that wood that was accelerated cut? Are we at year twenty-five then?
Or thirty? So that would have been, and, and the, uh, the rotation age, so to speak, of fifty years can be less than that, so it could be any harvested anywhere from forty years to fifty years of age. So, yeah, if we were looking at, be about twenty forty, twenty forty-five or so, we might start harvesting.
That's the big stuff you cut off, that.
Correct. And, and it's, it's, it's somewhat like, well, it's, it can be looked as, as a crop, I mean, you know, right now, our timber sales are quite considerably less, I do remember one in the good years that we were having one to one point three million dollars annually in timber revenue, that was through our accelerated cut. But it's like, it's like plant, if you wanna you know, take the analogy of farming, it's kinda like a corn crop.
Yeah.
It's, it's just because we don't have the money there, you know, the harvest time hasn't showed up yet. It's only June or July, you know, we have to wait till September.
Although I look at, we've been invested a half-life into it already, at least, right? You're looking at twenty years old roughly. Where you're getting with that growth? We didn't, we didn't log it up and sell it, is what I'm saying, we expect in, in the region, my question is, does a re, the second generation, does that usually produce, do we know if it's producing better or less?
Yeah, typically, um, your, your, uh, uh, second growth Aspen stands are going to be producing considerably amount more timber per acre, plus a higher quality. Yeah, you'd probably be going from somewhere between oh, fifteen to twenty quarts to the acre, up to twenty-five to thirty quarts per acre on your second cut.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, so my, in my mind, is it, is it, you know, we have, is it twenty years more, you know, investment, or we don't know what the wood market's gonna be, but I imagine it's gonna be old, you know?
Correct, yeah, I don't, I wouldn't see.
I don't know, I'm just trying to play, understand both sides of it.
So, in twenty years, we're gonna hit the.
Lot of timber.
Yeah.
Whoever's sitting in the corner.
They'll be ready to cut.
Yep.
Some of that, we did cut and sell. Didn't we?
Yeah, mu, um, much of it we have already cut and harvested, we're looking at the second, uh, cut on it.
That's sometimes, we're talking about that accelerated cut stuff?
Mm-hmm. But didn't we those parcels that were outliers from the large memorial forest chunks? Didn't we cut the timber and then sell the land?
Yeah, that is correct on a lot of, on, on the majority of the properties, we did have timber harvest on those before we sold those, and we're still doing that as well. Um, it's kinda interesting too, because I do know there was one parcel in Parkridge Township that we, uh, sold the timber on, and we actually made more money on the timber, considerably more money on the timber value than, than the timber sale than what we did on the, the actual land sale. So it does pay to harvest the timber, some of it at least, on some of these parcels before we sell them.
So, should we go back and take care of the business that we have to, those resolutions? Just so we get our timber sales, our, our land, our auction stuff going, not our timber sales, our.
Oh.
So.
So we've got, I gotta find them again there.
So, twenty twenty-three dash thirteen dash fourteen dash fifteen and dash sixteen are the four resolutions on twenty.
And twenty, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't covered twenty or sixteen yet, though.
Okay, so we'll wait, then we can do them all at once, can't we?
No, you could do those first, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Okay.
If you're doing this one motion, or do they need to be separate?
I think we can do them at one.
So I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three thirteen, um, which is the classification non-conserv, conservation, and then, um, twenty twenty-three fourteen, um, with parcels, and twenty twenty-three fifteen, which is the kind of statement that law and home.
And I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so everybody understand what we're doing? We're, we're property that didn't sell.
Yep, so.
And we're adding, we're putting all the new properties that are for sale. And.
Classifying a non-cons.
Classifying, um, yep.
They'll go back on the sale though, you just have to go, yeah.
Right, so things that we're withdrawing, they're gonna be revalued and relooked at, and then those will go back on, and then as far as the classifications, that's really nice, because we've had people coming to the day of the sale, and you've got a whole room full of people that are here to buy that property.
Right.
That's an ugly situation.
Right. Yeah. So, any questions on those resolutions? They're pretty standard. Here and none. Debbie, you wanna call the roll?
District two, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Lovegrin. District four, Commissioner Waldham.
I'd like to vote present, I gotta talk more with, uh, back when I get back, and I'd like to talk to the actual commissioners one-on-one that are on this land advisory committee. Is it allowable to do that? See, if it's vote present?
You can, you can not vote, yeah.
Yeah, you can abstain.
Yeah, I'll abstain. Any more information?
District five, Commissioner Lovegrin.
Aye.
Yes. Okay.
Eric. Um, before we move on, um, do we want to make an open discussion as far as retaining our memorial forest lands? I know there's, there's always two sides to looking at, um, public land, and, uh, JJ's, uh, as, um, as well as others have, have thought that it might be best to put all this land back into, uh, private ownership, and the subject's not gonna go away.
Right.
But yet, on the other hand, um, and it's not just on the local level, it's throughout the state, even on the national level, that it's been, you know, people determine that we, that public lands are important, they're part of, uh, uh, lands that are open to all and to people to enjoy, it's not, it's not just our timber that we're looking at or making money on them. But the ability for the general public to, uh, properties to, uh, not everybody may be able to, to, uh, go out west for a hunt, but yet they can use, you know, either, whether it's state lands or, or county memorial forest lands, those properties do you use, did we wanna discuss that at all, or save that for another, another time?
We could just as well do it now, you wanna do it now, JJ, or you wanna wait till you get home?
I would say just with the audio/video quality we have here and, uh, and nice conversations previous with, with, uh, back on this, I just wait till I get back and one-on-one, and like I said, I, I'm, I'm very glad to hear him say that this should be open for review. And, uh, I guess with that also, I wanna talk to the, um, commissioners that are on this committee, and then I think we should even look at maybe doing some com, committee, uh, some changes, maybe it's time, 'cause I, I realize, you know, we have a couple commissioners that actually are in business and handle inventory, and, you know, know what it's like to profit from inventory and keep businesses running, I, I just myself struggle with this. We have land in our county, and that's how we make money. To have that land not for sale would be like, you know, excuse me, Josh, to use you for example.
JJ.
Yeah, Josh, you wouldn't not take inventory off your shelf, and neither would I, so I'll wait, Steve, I'll wait and do it in person.
Yeah, if we're gonna discuss.
There's your answer.
So today, otherwise we'll wait.
Yep.
Okay. We're, we'll wait.
Need new committee members.
Well, that, that appointment comes up, uh, in Danny Murray every year.
Yeah, well, we can talk when we get back, thank you, Steve.
Okay, we'll go on to the other resolutions.
Okay, I'll, I'll take the next one, um, which is the set aside resolution, so twenty twenty-three dash sixteen. Um, so some years back, um, the commissioners had originally, um, it's changed throughout the years, because we can take a percentage of those land and timber sale and put them in a special fund for certain reasons, according to statute. Um, and so, those that we've been doing are parks and tra, parks and recreation, blight cleanup of those tax forfeited properties, and then timber development. And so, our resolution, we do it annually to determine if we want to continue those same, um, set asides or not. Um, the, the committee recommended staying with the same set of sites, um, to continue growing those funds with the knowledge that really like our land sales are gonna be coming to an end.
So, that in a nutshell is resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen.
I'll make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three sixteen.
I'll second.
Promotion by Lovegrin, seconded by Moore. Any discussion? Not, Debbie, you wanna call the roll?
District two, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Lovegrin.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Waldham.
Yeah, Sam, I won't vote.
District five, Commissioner Lovegrin.
Aye.
District one, Chair Holland.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, who's gonna talk about, uh, grant easement, uh, and then those, see, town.
This is a good story. Yeah, so, um,
We'd, uh, hear it.
Uh, our, uh, the final resolution is, uh, to grant an easement on an abandoned town road in the town of Dozy, which is the former town of Dozy, which is now reorganized into New Dozy Township. It's approximately, uh, part of what I believe is called the Kingsdale Road, uh, I think, uh, the parcel that's been abandoned is two and a half, you know, three and a half miles, and, uh, part of it is on county tax forfeited properties. And through time, the township did not vacate it, but it has been abandoned through lack of maintenance as well as it was not recorded as required now by law to retain old roads and easements and such, so the property is being accessed by this old road through by private landowners who also maintain the road themselves. It is gated up front by the state DNR, it's, uh, it's, uh, being used for timber access, not only from the state DNR, but also through the county. So the road is actually still being used, it's recognized as an old road, and the landowners back there, uh, if they go to sell their property, uh, and they get a potential buyer, the banks will state, well, it, it's landlocked, there's no easements to the property. So what they're trying to do is come up with the ability to have some easements to their prop, to their, to their property. And on the county lands, it's, uh, uh, probably a mile, mile and a half of, uh, of this road rests on county lands, and that would be the description that's involved in this, this, uh, easement. And, uh, landowners would like to start with being able to get an eas, easements from the county, and then go from there, and they're gonna try for the state as well, and that should get them the easements that they re, that they're gonna be required to need.
And there's quite a few landowners back there.
Yeah, there's probably ten, maybe, just ten, maybe, possibly, and in the past too, when this road, it, it fell apart, I mean, you could not even see it, it was a huge stretches, wetlands, Dale Kirchberg actually bought property back in there and, uh, did a lot of work on it, and part of, of, uh, the construction of the road, they needed fill on it, and Dale owned quite a, quite a bit of property on there, so the county land department exchanged easements for film. And Dale owned quite a, quite a bit of property on there, so the county land department exchanged easements for film material. So we also have easements up through quite a few, quite a bit of his property. There's two landowners up there that the road rests on that do not have easements on those, but the adjoining property, the, the road running down the section line, the other property is either state or county land, so the access is fairly covered and into those properties.
Did Robin review your description, or you just write it?
Um, no, I just wrote them, uh, and fact, when provided this is, the resolution is passed before the actual easement is written, it will go to Robin.
Okay.
For his review, because I'm by no means, uh,
We don't.
Qualified for the writing of the easement.
Have another schmitty. We don't, yeah, yeah, it's just, it's, I don't, it's not that I don't trust your description, because I do, but it's, it's just that.
No, he needs, he needs to go through.
Yeah, okay, great.
Well, this is the one too, where you don't know if the road is really where the road's supposed to be, so you're by golly and where it is. But this is the one also where all of the residents have really been maintaining that road too, correct, and, and making it so that they can utilize it.
Yeah, that's true. Every year they, they pool together money, and I believe, uh, anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars is what they, uh, expend on that road in annual maintenance.
So that was one of the things that they, they requested was that there'd be no, they wouldn't pay for the easement, they'd have to pay for like the recording and that type of stuff, but because they put all the money into the road in the, in the past.
We, we also get to use the road. I mean, it, the
Correct.
We need, uh, access for timber harvest.
Correct. We have, we have two timber sales on it right now, and we make a contribution as well when we're having a, uh, timber, timber sales on those roads. Um, but in a nutshell, uh, some of these town roads, quite a few of them, if they have not been recorded in the county recorder's office, nor have they been maintained for a cer- a certain amount of time, they legally cease to exist. The township may not have actually vacated the roads, but they legally cease to exist. And, uh, and this isn't the only road that, town road that dislies, but the landowners are trying to put something together to try to maintain the legality of this old road for their access. And the, I, I did forget to mention too, that the general public uses it as well before we were going to get up to hunt parcels up there, or even sugar mapleing.
Yeah, and the resolution has language that it's a non-exclusive public easement, to make sure.
So it's just not for
Right.
Six people or two people.
Right.
What are your public access?
And also in the resolution, we have a note that the county and New Dozy Township are not responsible for maintenance or activities associated with improvements.
Have we ever done anything like this before?
About a year ago.
Yeah, um, we do have a policy for, uh, issuing easements. And they're typically just for individuals. This is for, this is a public, non-exclusive public easement that we're doing here, so it's a little bit different. But yes, we have done those before, and the, uh, individual, uh, paid for the easement. Where in this case, the payment would be waived because it's public use.
This is gated with that gate. Be removed then?
No, the gate will remain because it's a state access for the timber sale. It's actually a, a DNR gate. And, and the difference between this, I want to make this point too, is that this road was built by a road authority, which at the time was the township, and it was built exclusively for public use. Whereas we do get occasionally easement requests on logging roads, and those were built totally under a different, for different purposes, which we will not, we have not ever had easements. We will not, we have never sold an easement on a logging road or a forest management road. Those are just designed for different reasons.
That's the part I didn't understand here.
Okay.
Right up. Now I do. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just a clarifying question, and this might be for the county attorney Reese, if you're listening. So if the county surveyor is going to potentially further refine the legal description, should this resolution note that? So that anyone who would look at this resolution would know that the description in here is not the final. I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering if that, where, where the first be it resolved ends Pine County, Minnesota, do we say something like to be further defined by the county surveyor and as recorded?
Could I elaborate on that?
Yeah.
Um, we could just postpone this, uh, resolution until Robin reviews it, and then put that legal description in there that after he refines it.
Perfect.
That'd be perfect, I think. Thanks. Thanks for clarifying the whole thing, because, uh, um, I was was kind of thinking that's the way it was, but it wasn't. You had quite a land being.
We did sixteen already. Are there other things in the minutes?
There are three other things in the minutes. They're on pages two and three. There's the Scott Carlson request, the storm damage cleanup, and the green leaf update, if any of those um, are worth further discussion or updates by the committee, or if there are questions.
Is that the gate, the keyed gate one? Yeah, that's the one. You gotta tell that one.
That's Scott Carlson, right?
Yeah, oh, the guy who wanted to have his own key to a gate.
Yeah, we had a request, um, to bypass one of our policies for, uh, landowners that use our the, the actual forest road, logging road systems that we have. And, um, what he was, we make every effort to, uh, so that individuals, if they want to log or cut firewood, put food plots, build a cabin, and that can have access to their properties through the forest management roads. But they are gated. And, um, what that typically involves is we'll put a different lock on there, and then they, they get, they get a letter to, uh, confirm what their use is for. And, but overall, they the, um, the use ceases around October. That's when the, we have a lot of the general public utilizing those roads uh, for hunting and such. But, uh, yeah, we had a request that they could have pretty much year-round access to the, to the gate, through the gate to their lands, and, um, the discussion with the committee was, was that there are other landowners up there as well. Some who would like to have that, that, um, that privilege, and there are a few that like it shut all the time. Um, but then also, um, where's the fairness to the general public that you know, during hunting season, somebody has to park, and if they don't have an ATV, they gotta walk all the way up to where they're gonna hunt. Um, and here comes a a pickup truck driving by. And the, and these owners too, I mean, you they, they they may, they only have twenty acres up there, so they have a cabin site on there, and the rest of their party hunts on the tax forfeited pro- properties surrounding it, so um, it was decided that, um, if the gates, if such a privilege did exist, that we would just open up the gates during hunting season for everybody to use, just to keep it fair. Which also opens up another other possibilities of, you know, wet weather, damage. Um, and then there, there are people up there that want to keep the gates closed because, um, it offers a unique hunting experience. You don't have pickup trucks driving by at ten o'clock in the morning when you're out hunting. So the, the committee decided to, uh, decline on, um, Scott Carlson's request.
But you were going to look at making it, because people camp at that, that little area where you can park your cars and stuff there, and you were going to look at making that bigger so more cars could be there, and there'd be better camping for people and that type of stuff that you.
Yeah. Yeah, correct. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Terry, but yeah, it's a high-use area, so the parking area has has outgrown its use, so we're going to expand on it and also make some more, make some better campsites for people, so it's a, it's a better experience as well.
Those are very popular. Uh, storm damage. Can you just give me a quick update on that?
Yeah, um, so it come to a surprise to some that live on the southern part of the county exactly what happened on the north end. Because, uh, the, uh, the storm affected northern Pine County as well as, uh, Carlton County, and then parts of, uh, Wisconsin, and it may have been a lake effect too, but it started out as rain. And then from there, it was such heavy snows that it stuck to everything. And some pine plantations were devastated by it, snapped off and then totally devastated. Others weren't, depending on how they were managed. One of the biggest, uh, damaging components for the forest was young timber stands. Mainly in the ten to twenty-year-old bracket, where a lot of them are just laid flat. And over time, some of them have popped up, others have just snapped off. So it's going to be time before we see, uh, exactly what the extent of that damage was. Um, it's definitely going to be a financial impact for not only the county, but the state as well as private landowners. Because the, uh, damage was so extensive and pretty much irreversible. But, um, it'll only be time until after spring, and sap starts growing, the trees start growing, wind blows them around to see exactly, uh, you know, what the recovery rate is, but in some stands, it's looking pretty poor right now. The other thing.
Is that an all-species break?
Uh, that would be mostly in the cu- in the, uh, young aspen birch cut over areas.
So how much did you say that you figured Pine County has lost in timber value because of that storm?
Um, initially, um, did I state like three and a half million, but I believe that's like the, like a car wreck. It always seems worse right at the beginning until you actually go through recovery stage, so I would back off on that, can, uh, it's probably considerably, but yeah, there is going to be a, a huge economic impact in the future on some of those stands, as well as, like I say, uh, private owners are going to suffer from that loss as well.
But this is something, Steve, that I'll be bringing up at the Township Association meeting too, because they've got until March thirtieth to apply. And, um, I know Denise down in the sheriff's office has been talking to her too, but we'll bring it back up.
I can discuss that a little bit too. So the other half, the other half of this is what you, what you probably saw LeBron going through in his staff, was all the cleanups that involved uh, trees over roads, uh, arched over, froze in. And it went, uh, not only on the, on the public roads, but also, um, the townships, county, but, uh, the snowmobile clubs were, uh, faced with cleaning up a huge amount of debris, uh, ATV clubs, uh, forest roads, they all needed to be, uh, cleaned up as well. And, uh, yeah, the state, Pine County is part of, uh, what, eight or ten counties that qualify for disaster relief from this storm. It's not a FEMA, the, the, the reports and everything you fill out are FEMA forms, but it's actually state. And they have until any agency, community, uh, township, city that, uh, believes they have, uh, would like reimbursement, it's a seventy-five percent reimbursement from the state. Um, deadline is March thirtieth. And, yeah, so if, if anyone's interested in that, they should, uh, contact Denise Anderson. She's the top, the contact for the townships on that. The clubs, the ATV clubs, snowmobile clubs, they go through the land department for, uh, their seventy-five percent reimbursements.
And Denise notified all the townships.
Yeah, yeah.
Give that final reminder.
It's a one-time payment as well, so, um, the land department is, uh, the co- is separated from the, from the highway department. Um, all of our expenses, as well as the ATV, the snowmobile clubs, we have, you know, wait till, uh, the ATV and ATV clubs are going to be later in the year, but we just make one package that we submit to the state at the time for payment, and then they'll send us a check and.
Which is just like an application by March thirtieth? It's not, you have to have the dollars all spent and figured out?
Correct. It's just an app, it's a one-page, very simple application. And it needs to, yeah. The deadline being March thirtieth, I wouldn't push that too much, because after that we don't qualify, so you know any townships or cities, anyone that's interested tell them to call Denise immediately.
All right. Anything else?
Do you guys want to hear where things are at with the Greenleaf property at all?
Oh. Might as well.
All right, um, as this has gone back a few years, but last the last time we addressed this was, uh, last about this time last year. And Lee wanted to, um, be able to, uh, have a, he wanted to, um, be able to keep his cabin that he built on on the county's memorial forest lands. He wanted to, uh, be able to, uh, have it there and possibly pay for the land, uh, or some other um, possibilities. With that, uh, however, uh, the county board decided at that time that he would need to, uh, remove the structure. And we gave him time for that, and it has not occurred yet. So Reese has sent some, uh, letters to him, and his deadline is this Friday, the thirtieth. If it hasn't been uh, removed at that time, it'll be brought forward through the court systems.
And then what, they just tear down?
Um, I believe, uh, yeah, if he is, does not do that, then, uh, we will be asking that we have, we can take, to do the tear downs, and then, uh, he would absorb the costs of it.
If he doesn't pay the cost, it would go down as a special assessment.
So would that ever forfeit the property?
If he doesn't pay the special assessment.
That would be like a ten year.
I don't know. I mean, we've, when people have done things willingly, we've worked with them. Um, but there's other places where you see these expensive special assessments be put on as one year. So it's something, we'll cross that bridge if we get there.
And I think the part that makes this one hard is that he built a cabin on land he didn't own. He didn't get, he should have had two permits when he built that, and he didn't talk to anybody and get the permits that he needed. So everything that he did was so underhanded that, you know, it's, it's hard to say that we'll give you ten years to pay your special assessment to do what you should have done before, or what you should not have done in the first place.
And from what I understand, you guys have been more than willing and trying to work with them over the years and hasn't really cared till now.
For years, or?
Yeah. Well, that's, I guess you could call it one of the benefits of living and working in a small-town community, is you get to know people, and, you know, I do know Lee. And it's not easy. It really is a difficult thing. And if you know Lee, he's a very likable guy, and
Yeah.
And, um, but, you know, it's what makes it tough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, he's my neighbor.
I know.
But he knew where the logging was, pretty obviously.
Well, like Terry did mention, he, uh, he skipped a couple of the processes that should have, should have occurred, which would have if this wouldn't have happened if he would have went that road.
Yep. All right. Let's take a break.
Yeah. I'm gonna stand up.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Well, thank you. For winning it.
I do. It's my question, just answer it.
I think that's all I have.
That's all. I don't know. She she might have.
So you know, you talked about the DNR having a gate across that non-exclusive.
The, we and our having a gate across that non-exclusive, non-exclusive piece.
Correct.
Okay, so how does that make that public friendly?
Well, um, parts of that road are on. Are on, so the, so the road. Theory is supposed to follow the section line.
Yeah.
And the section line on the west side is public land. On the east side is private, there's no easement on the east. So when people use that road, they're actually on somebody else's land where there's, e- even though it's an old town road. The state's put a gate up front there, and I, I believe some of the landowners might be involved in this too, but it is a state gate. And it's because there is no maintenance, a little maintenance to it, they gated. So that, to keep, to keep damage in the spring and stuff down.
Yeah, but then how can you call it a, a non-exclusive public easement? It's the public.
But they can, but they can, just not with highway vehicles. There's a parking area on for ATVs to go up the road.
So they can use it, they just can't drive down with their four-wheel drive.
Correct, yeah, but the, but the landowners up there, they, they do need to have keys on them. Yeah, and the other thing too is the.
County line if it's a, if it's a mile there.
So. They.
There was not a seat open in the place.
So the gate's here.
Okay.
And then we rolled gates right down the center of the line. We're just reserving the easement along here. And like the.
Right, there's, there's not, it can be sort of a gated access to that land.
Right, that everybody uses it, assuming it's a.
I, I just have a hard time with it. And we also. Coverage, we don't pay for anybody else.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
In order for the um.
When he thinks it's gonna upset.
Is it, I'm thinking I'm gonna sign that law because maybe that was a bad idea.
Are they in college or auto college?
That, and he bought it from the same place, they said, is it concerning that two county commissioners bought files from us? Is that same side?
So now we're kind of more.
What they wanna do is.
It's our fault.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been great. The main thing is we always just filed with the skid loader and. Look, he's, he's done both. But still, like, our whole thing that we filed would take him at least a couple hours, and now we've done it in twenty minutes.
It's, it's kind of like. They try to wing them up and they just.
We rod it space and so we piled it higher.
Yeah, there's a trade.
And then you need some bigger, yeah, this year.
Yeah, like one of them airports.
Hi, thanks for coming down, Greg.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
I think.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, see you. Strap on them snowshoes.
I keep telling him to give Joe a big stick and go get the snow off the ass.
You tried that before, it didn't work.
Right, he needs a bigger stick.
Guy rides around and gets.
Oh, really?
I don't know where that's at, but.
All right, now we're gonna talk some strategic plans and stuff.
Yeah, and Leslie's gonna carry the presentation, but I know.
And I found my pack, so I'm good to go. Very.
All right, Leslie.
All right, hi, I'm Leslie Satter, you're Economic Development Coordinator, if you forgot from a couple hours ago. Um, David has invited me to kind of lead this discussion, or at least start it. Um, regarding strategic planning, so I have just a few slides to share with you. And the overall intention here is to kind of get your thoughts churning. So that we can maybe later have a, a more in-depth discussion, or if you feel really ambitious today, we can have some of that as well. All right, the clicker. Gonna work. All right, so um. A few of you have probably already been through some strategic planning sessions, um, if you work in nonprofit or government long enough, you get to do this. Um, and typically what you do is you take a look at your mission statement and see if that needs to change. And lo and behold, we have a lot of mission statements, but they all sort of come together and um. I, I did like a, a word cloud to kind of show what, what words stand out the most. The biggest ones are the ones that show up the most, obviously Pine County shows up, but providing. Um, services, efficient, using technology, information. Um, it really centers around providing good customer service efficiently, effectively. Um, and with a smile, you know, a smile doesn't show up, but that is kind of where it all comes together.
Like a pizza.
Kind of, yeah, yeah. And then, uh, once you've taken a look at your mission statement, you're like, yeah, that's good, that, that definitely envelopes what we're trying to do here, you, you create a vision. And overall, at the county level, we don't have just a county vision statement, but a few of our departments did. And so I did another word cloud. And information stands out in health and data and being supportive and being a foundation. Um, kind of was at the center. Information was the biggest one, and that is kind of the role of county government sometimes is the dissemination or collection of information. Um, holding it and sharing it as well. That was just kind of setting the table for strategic planning. And here is um, a nice little diagram of the process, so you look at your vision. And mission and make sure that it truly envelopes what you wanna do. Um, it, it defines who you are as an organization and identifies what objectives you're, you're intending to meet. And it also should encompass your aspirations, some of your dreams, where do you wanna go? Um, those then feed into some drivers and success factors. Uh, what funding is available to do stuff? Uh, what are the laws and the regulations that require us to do stuff or prohibit us from doing stuff? Um, and then also always being aware of any current critical. Or emerging issues that could be coming down the pipeline that we might need to address. Um, once you've identified some of those drivers and success factors, then you do a SWOT analysis, which. This board is very good at doing almost annually. Um, talking about what your strengths are, what your weaknesses are, what opportunities exist and what threats are out there that might prohibit your success. And then sort of where we drop off, and my next slide touches on this a little bit, but. Is, is setting some long-term objectives, large achievements that, like Beth said earlier, seven generations deep. Um, and it's more of a destination and becomes very dreamlike. But then that's what formulates your roadmap and tells you how to do what you wanna do or, or how you're gonna get to where you wanna go. Um, and then also discusses how you're gonna mobilize some of your resources. So what do we got today? Um, we have a lot of plans. We have a wonderful comprehensive plan, a highway improvement plan, public health has done their community health assessment. Um, we have comprehensive water plans and the HRA EDA has established some strategic priorities. And they all sort of blend together, um. But almost separately, then the board sets their goals and priorities, so you do a SWOT analysis every January, February-ish. You talk about what emerging issues you're aware of with the committees you sit on and, and your constituents are telling you about, and you prioritize some goals. Um, and then those goals get sent out to your leadership team. And you can agree with it and support it, or, you know, maybe sometimes there's some disagreement. And you have to realign with what some of those priorities are. Um, and then. The one thing to keep in mind though is that if you want to see results, this quote that I stole from the comprehensive plan, it's never an accident. Um, to be productive, it's always a result of a commitment to excellence, intelligent planning and focused effort. And if you were to take that quote, you would find a lot of that, those words and that vibe in the mission and, and vision. That you see across all of the departments, that is kind of what their goals are, their vision is. So one thing I do kind of wanna focus on today, or to kind of plant some seeds of thought, is. Your twenty twenty-one board goals and priorities did infiltrate. Or at least started addressing some of your goals and your comprehensive plan, and I did not type out all like fourteen, fifteen goals that you had in your comp plan. I tried to lump them together by topic, um, and then draw arrows to. Your existing goals and priorities and where they're plugging into your comprehensive plan. There are some gaps. Because like my earlier slide kind of touched on, if you don't have those long-term. Objectives and you don't have kind of a strategic plan, you can sometimes have gaps. So in your twenty twenty-one board goals and priorities, the wetland bank development. Um, the re-establishing local government officials meetings and the pandemic responses and lessons didn't really feed into the comprehensive plan. And within the comprehensive plan, we're not really aware of any active goals from the board to do resident education. So there's just a little bit of a gap there, but not that I don't think resident education is happening, it just didn't make the board's top goal, so just food for thought. But this is where strategic planning can kind of help make sure that there's a checks and balances between the two. So this is where I kind of am hoping to. Start some discussion in upcoming meetings. So those last two stepping points with strategic, strategic planning, the long-term objectives and then the strategic action are kind of what's missing in our. And our whole scheme of things. Um, we can look at our existing plans and review the board priorities from twenty twenty-one. And ask ourselves, do we agree with what we're doing, do we disagree, what should we do differently? Um, but ultimately, we need to start visualizing what an ideal Pine County looks like to each of us. So that we can formulate a long-term plan or a strategic plan, even a three to five-year strategic plan. Um.
Yes, like it.
Yeah, and then.
Start looking a little longer than just the next figure or the next.
I, I agree that, and, and I think, I think Leslie has recognized that in some areas we do. We have a five and beyond year road. Greg just talked about a fifty-year regeneration of timber harvest. You know, so we, we do have some long-term goals, but.
I didn't mean to jump in, sorry.
You didn't jump in.
Happy to hear a long, for longer looking.
Yeah, sometimes we get focused on what can we get done before December thirty-first.
So Matt, what would be helpful to you to get that longer term?
Well, I, I love, we need to have our sit-down and goal session. You know, as a board, and I think this. It's probably gonna be almost the same thing as this really, right? There'll be a big chunk of it, because everything's in there, you know, our public safety's in there. But helpful to me to, you mean as far as having a meeting, I think we need a meeting that just focuses on brainstorming. And knowing our. Leveability and overcoming some of those obstacles. We need to do a lot of, we have, like, we're just rethinking this solid waste. That's something you wanna have a long-term plan for, but what I just learned today is you can't. That market is so volatile that, and we're spending a lot of money on it, and it doesn't mean it's bad. I mean, we need to have it down there, I'm not arguing against you when I say that, but it's, it's just the. I pay for my garbage and I recycle. I don't expect the county to do anything for me. I drive and take care of it, and I'm not rich. You know? So. And that's not a good argument, I just, it just, but that's, we spend a lot of money on that and that's.
The other end where you drop your recycling.
What's that?
At the other end, you drop your recycling off and the county's paying for it.
Yes, yeah, well, so am I though with the recycling thing, right, I'm part of the guy getting taxed for.
You're, you're getting, you're paying for it, but, but you're all, it's also part of a county.
I, I know that, I know that. And I, I'm not, that's why I say Steve, I'm not saying it, I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah.
That it's.
No, I, I.
Can we put money to work in a better way, I don't know.
I, David, uh, part of that. Question that I think we have to try to figure out is. You know, there's, there's talk of a, a thing like a huge solar farm coming to Pine County. My first reaction was, yeah, that'd be awesome, you know? Um, is, uh, but it, it's not proposed to be right next to me, so it's easy for me.
Yeah.
It, it's like Terry brought up today, you know, I look at that plan. Uh, for an exit and I go, you know, the most thing that makes the most sense to me for Pine County. Is to extend Highway twenty-three to the east and go get over the railroad tracks and make a nice road, but. I don't own that farm right there.
Yeah, you can hit the sick inks and you're gonna get a lot.
I don't, I, we had, it's part of the whole formula. How that works.
So we, that, that, well, I'm gonna talk about that, but yeah, so the, um.
I, I, what I would like to do, because we've made, I think we've made significant progress in the last. Since we started. We formed a broadband committee. And we have interests that we have some contractors doing some work. I think the hardest thing for us is going to be to hold our foot to the floor. And make sure it is, we, we said we're gonna get broadband to Pine County. That doesn't, that doesn't mean we leave Bruno out. I, I, you know, so we have to make sure as this thing. It's a, it's gonna be a long time coming, it's not gonna all happen by next birth of July. But we have to make sure we're enthusiastic. About hooking up the last fifty customers as we are the first fifty. But I, I think that's a long-term, I call it a long-term goal that we have to stay focused on.
I've been thinking on that too, you know, because it's, we get excited about East Central Energy, but East Central Energy doesn't go to Bruno.
Right, right.
So yeah, it's like how, so yeah, you're right, we can't lose that vision of.
How, how are we gonna get, and I've already heard it from people in Rock Creek that, you know, they're not on East Central's plan, they're not a. Um, Starwire didn't get funded, Midco says they're not gonna expand anymore in the country. Uh, where does that leave us? You know?
And I had gone to that one plan or one meeting and they had said, um. And it's all hindsight, but we probably shouldn't have given those grants to Midco because they were only gonna do that one area. And so them taking the most congested area is gonna keep somebody else from wanting to take that area because that congested area is already taken. So, you know, for them to go there, it's not cost effective.
The only, the only grant we gave to Midco.
Right.
Was that little tiny thing just south of the Snake River where nobody was.
Right.
It wasn't where they already were going to build. It wasn't in Rock Creek. That that was with their own money. And it wasn't the northeast corner of the lake. That was their own money.
How are we doing on our rebranding of our website or whatever?
We're not rebranding our website, but I do have postcards with, the survey is still open. So we are, we're doing a big push into the community for people to take the survey to tell us about, you know, why you live here, why you work here, you know, tell your vision, not really your vision for Pine County, but just what words come to mind. And it's kind of a fun little survey. So if you guys haven't taken it yet, I would hope you would and encourage people to take it. But that will, that that definitely ties into this strategic planning and what your vision is and what your aspirations are for the county. I think that will help us get there. Because once we have an identity that's beyond just the governmental organization, that would be a great way to sell ourselves.
When you get on the survey and how do people, where's that multiplication at?
How are we promoting? Civic Brand is handling most of the promotion. There is, there's been some paid ads pushed out there.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I have. We have postcards.
We got postcards, JJ, we're passing out here.
Debbie's behind you. They're out at all the county counters and I've been going and putting them out at local businesses as much as I can. I was just given these by Civic Brand when they were in town.
I guess I, I haven't heard of it. I don't know if you were advertised in the local papers or if it was just social media. But if you're putting them on business counters, I I haven't seen any.
Well, I haven't made it quite down to Rico yet, but I will. We are pushing it out to the chambers and it is on social media. It was given to the local media.
I wouldn't expect any down here at all, but I'm just speaking when I'm in contact with Surgeon Lake on a daily basis. I just, I haven't seen or heard it. I'm just asking. So it's not in the newspaper? There's not an ad or anything for this survey for people to take it or how would I pass the word on?
Well, it has been shared with the media. I know the radio station picked it up and did an article about it and did some news plugs about it. I believe it was in the Commissioner update a couple of weeks ago, once it was live. It's, it's still open and we are still promoting it all the regular ways we try to promote it. So yeah, I don't
You shoot me a, you shoot me the address or something like it's a W. Is it like a Survey Monkey or what is it?
Uh, they've created a branding website and it's, it's landing page on there and we can get that to you.
County dot com, JJ.
Pardon me?
Landing pine county dot com.
A branding, thank you, Terry.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So I actually met these guys, was it last week?
Two weeks ago. Yep.
Um, that's all. Anyways, it was very good. I met with two of them and they asked some really good, hard questions. That really made me think and I don't know if they got anything out of it, but a few times I think I talked myself in circles, but anyways.
That's a good question.
It was, it it made me think and they approached me a few different angles. And and I liked it when I really got to think about it. And that's what they said. I'm like, I would just kind of go with the same thing. I don't know if this is, that's what this is or what, but the approach they had was pretty, pretty good, so.
Are you gonna be working with them the whole time or who is?
So Jen Ryan and I are are kind of their point of contact. But Breeza with Civic Brand is the one that's reaching out directly to the local contacts that we provided her. We gave her a pretty extensive list of people to reach out to. They're getting some feedback from people. All of your contact information's been given.
Yeah, so when the product's done on the website and are we still gonna have like the Pine County Government site too, or is this gonna be everything out one site? Is this gonna be all ahead and then it connects us to like the Pine Counties page?
Um, so they're just, they're helping us with a brand, which will include the new logo and a tagline, which we will incorporate into our county website. We are tossing around the idea of like a visit Pine County page that is more of a visitor oriented, but none of that's been fleshed out yet. No.
Okay, so yeah, I just, I was thinking of all the stuff that's happening, like the One Watershed, One Plan things, that all that data, you know, because those plans, there's gonna businesses might look at that.
Yes, yeah.
See how far we have moved along. And I thought of something the other day too, that we need to get, do we have that already? You know, is that like the SWCDs and is that, is that, is there a connecting on her? I don't even look at it. I gotta work for this county and I'm not on it.
It's a little disjointed right now, I, I think, because I, I go, I represent Pine County on the Lower St. Croix Watershed. But I live in the St. Croix or the Snake River Watershed. That's where my farm's watershed is. And and they're, they're not tracking yet, which I, which I think once they get to the same organizational level, they will.
We had a conversation about that at Snake River Watershed about, you know, I was given a website, go look at this website, there's nothing on it. And that was Kinabik. And then she said, well, you have to go to Mille Lacs County and look at Mille Lacs County. And then I went to Mille Lacs County and it's like, you know, we should have our projects on our county website so people can see what we're doing in Pine County. And we should have, you know what, the money spent and where it is and and
And I think our goals should be out there so the public can say, wow, this is what the Pine County is shooting for.
So we had Kinabik.
It should be listed for our long-term goal.
Kinabik was there and Mille Lacs County was there and 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 then we had Caleb and we had Zach from Pine and they were all I, I think everybody was in agreement that we need to do something. I mean, how are we gonna advertise it if you don't have it out there? You know, we, we're not getting the projects because it's not being advertised and yeah.
And I, and I think the One Watershed, One Plan concept is still rolling out.
Yeah, right.
It creates this disjointed approach where if you want to get to the Snake River Plan, you have to know to go to the Mille Lacs County website.
Yeah.
Kinabik County's administering it.
Right, which, which is not intuitive. So I think on the back end, that really is a conversation with the counties and the SWCDs to one, figure out where is it hosted? And then two, everybody else links to that site.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I, yeah.
I, I never thought so at first, but it is for for even somebody that's been involved, it's, it's confusing. Because I hear neighbors talking about projects they're involved with through soil and water. But it's actually through funding from the Lower St. Croix.
Crazy.
But they only live a mile from me.
Yeah.
But they got their funding for their projects. We don't have it yet for the Snake River. So it'll take a while, I think, but we'll get there.
Well, you know, and I know that if you go to our site for elections and you want to click on something for that, you'll click on, I want to register to vote and it takes you right to the state of Minnesota. And then you can register to vote. It, it's really slick having those, those places, reading, click on it and it'll take you to that one source so that you can do what you need to do.
All I know is that everybody is using this from my kid's age on. Because they don't look in the phone books. It's like, no, they want to go camping. They're on there.
They make them anymore?
They go, hey Siri.
Yeah, and I find my VS, my VRBOs and all this stuff, you know, and that's another thing we have to discuss, you know, how we're gonna, what do we do with those?
So I've heard two topics that are probably ripe for strategic planning. Uh, one is communication. We know we have nobody internal whose job that is, right? Everybody does some extent. And then we also know we have changing environments with the watersheds, but also with other, how, how other things are evolving, right? The new generation, Matt, you were talking about with the phones. So to me, that's where the county board can maybe give some vision as to what is it that you would see the county doing in two, three, four or five years. Uh, and then the, just the whole water planning piece. Right? We talked, I remember years ago talking about the One Watershed, One Plan. And I was thinking that was gonna be a great thing and it, I think in hindsight is. But now it's a different environment and we need to consider what is the county role in, in strategic planning? I think Terry is, is carrying some conversation to the Snake River Board, right? That's really interesting about what is the future of, of that board? So maybe that's another, uh, just note that we take for whenever we get, whenever you get together.
And then what's the glue that holds them all together? I mean, all this watershed. There's four plans.
Oh, I see what you mean. You have, it's gonna have to have some kind of, the SWCDs or they, they don't want them fighting, so you have to have a separate board for all of them, a one board for all. That's gonna, that's gonna be
I think
Evolution in the end, right?
I, I never, never envisioned
I don't know. I struggle with
That was popped off to me. I've been talking with Teresa from Snake River. And one of the things is, okay, so once One Watershed, One Plan is done, are the counties still gonna be doing some of our own water plants? You know, or are we gonna rely totally on them? You know, so I mean, that's, and she said that's things that we all need to be discussing. You know, because it's not black and white.
So, but we always have a county board with the SWCD, one commissioner at least and an alternate. And I think every SWCD does, right?
On those boards? On the boards?
Yeah. I think they're structured that way.
Well, I was told, I had a good conversation with her yesterday and and being new, it's kind of, you know. But she had stated that it was not the intent to have the watersheds be part of the, the boards. Is that anything you remember, Josh? She thought that it was just
Not being part of the SWCD.
Right.
I, I think
The Snake River Water, yeah, so the One Watershed, One Plan.
Not, I'm sorry, just to make sure, not having the Soil and Water Conservation Districts be participants in the One Watershed, One Plan Boards.
Right. Yeah.
Oh, that'd be interesting.
So she had said that it was a law and it was just gonna be the county commissioners. And that, that's what I had said was my understanding was that that was not the case until August.
Snake River Watershed Management Board doesn't have Soil and Water. It's only the commissioners.
So what we're gonna be talking about at the next meeting is dissolving that board. I'm just going with the one board.
Well, it was unique when One Watershed, One Plan came in to, I had already had how many years? Snake River Watershed. So it was like when, when Bowser sat there and I was like, oh, this is a no-brainer. The only difference was adding the, the
Right.
Soil and Water Conservation.
We got that done.
Yeah, so and that, that was the only thing, and I thought that was part of the law, which I think it is. That's why I couldn't do anything. But, but my understanding is once, like Pine County, we have four, once they're all in place, our water management plan is gone because there's no real reason for it.
That's what I
As, that's right.
See, that was my understanding too.
That's what
She was saying yesterday that that's not necessarily what it is. So it's
But I think that's what's gonna happen in our county.
Yeah, the different thoughts that are out there kind of.
Yeah, and there, and Teresa comes from
Right.
Kinabik County, which I really like Teresa, but she might have a little bit indirectly and or
Right.
Maybe a little bit like her board that's now, what, seventy-five percent new or whatever it is, uh, maybe didn't have the real clear picture on it as well. But
And I, my two cents, right? The, the new planning process that the state is promulgating creates a single water plan for each watershed.
Right.
The only confusion in that is how is it administered?
Right.
Because there it is not clear. And that's where, as policymakers, you, you know, could scratch your heads and and converse with your neighbors and figure out how do you best administer a watershed plan that crosses county boundaries?
Well, and Bowser's, you know, this is also new is my belief. I'm not positive on that, but you watch Bowser and Bowser will be nope, you need to do it this way. And then in the next breath, it's, well, I'll take it and then we'll see. And then they just weaken and it's like, no, you don't have to do that anymore. You know, so it's
Well, I don't know either, but right now, you know, we're, we're done with NAMAGI. And it's functioning, you know, so and they, we just have the policy committees there. I'm still on it, but it might meet twice a year or something, or no more than quarterly, I'm sure.
Which is because they have clear direction, clear funding.
Yep.
Clear everything.
Would it make sense to have Bowser come to one of our TWO meetings and, and make sure that because we're getting supposed to have in three of our four watersheds done.
They attended ours last week.
And, but, but get us, get our board kind of all up to speed that if if we're interpreting everything right.
Yeah.
From three different Bowser's.
Who is the, okay, I, I have Darren now. We used to have, what was his name?
Jason.
Jason, yeah, and now it's Darren. Who do you guys have?
I have Aaron. Okay, and we had a, somebody sat in St. Paul.
We've had a variety of them. I, I, I don't know who our official one is, no.
I would say sure, Steve. But we need to be attentive to, I think, Terry's point that Bowser sometimes says what they want versus what the law or rules allow.
Yeah, we've all figured that.
So, so we, if, if our goal is to find out what, what does the playing field look like going forward? That's a question we should pose to Bowser and see if they're willing to, uh, to present that to us.
And what the Bowser lady at, when we were having the discussion, she says, we leave it up to you guys to decide how you're gonna govern if you're joining. They don't want to get in that mess. That's what I took away from our meeting last week.
See, and when we had ours, my understanding was Bowser really wanted Soil and Water to be part of the One Watershed, One Watershed, One Plan Board. But then when it came down to it, it was up to how the counties wanted it. So, you know, I, I don't know. Has it changed there too? So.
This is not my area of expertise, right? But the, under the law, counties have responsibility for water planning and Soil and Water Conservation Districts have responsibility for water planning. So we either do it together cooperatively or we do it separately. And I'm to, I think to Bowser's comment, they don't, you know, they, they're not gonna tell us. They can't tell us because we each have authority, counties and SWCD. And that's where maybe good policymaking comes in.
We really went off on a rant.
Yeah, we went off on a
Sorry, Leslie.
Sorry, yeah.
These are good though.
Yeah, it is.
These are topics that are long-term and require vision and leadership and
And they're gonna affect all that anyway. Let me go do something.
So we're probably out to May since we've got the road tour in April.
That's all right.
So I have one, one question for you. Leslie, well, I mean, I, um, many more, but is there, and I think you, I probably asked this to you before, is there any general idea, when you, you, you know, you, you need to have public land for public recreation opportunity? So, you know, is there a ratio or, you know, how do you define that? And I'm not putting on you to answer, but how can we, is, it'll be unique for every environment, right? I mean, I get that if somebody's mountain climbing, you have to have a mountain and it's gonna be this big or whatever.
I think it's, I think it's, you know.
It's what we decide.
It's this, if you live in Minnesota, there's colonies that are in the city.
I know.
Because, because it all got, every square inch of it got plowed up.
True.
You know?
And I know on a state forests land, which sit, we have a lot of, it's limited what you can, you know, on their state forests.
Mr. Chair, and I think that's what's unique is some counties, maybe that's what they should be. And some, you know, are, are way more public going. Some are in between. I don't, and that's why it's nice, uh, the state or federal government doesn't tell you, hey, you have to have this million percent because it's up to the local bodies to decide.
I just think we have to find that balance.
Yeah, and, and, and I think if you look at, people don't generally go south, other than cities for recreation. They don't go to Brown and Swift. Necessarily, although there are some nice spots there.
You know, on the other side, David told me before too, that, or Kelly, right now she's got a property that's on you could walk in there and buy it right now.
Four rentals.
Oh, I know. So, I mean, we can put it all up for sale and it sells what it sells. It's just kind of like everything.
We have a lot of parcels every year that so, because you have to remember that we have a lot of no access swamp land.
Right.
It's just the way it is. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, win tax forfeit for a reason.
Right.
So if I were to maybe try to draw together what I'm hearing for next steps on strategic planning. Is we would look to schedule the special meeting committee of the whole in May, maybe the 23rd of May. Uh, and we would have departments come and talk about the priorities and goals of the plans that they have in existence. Right? So that we're feeding off of those and understanding those. Have them talk about any critical needs or critical issues that they see that, uh, should rise to your attention. And then give the commissioners an opportunity to do some brainstorming, prioritizing, uh, and discussion on what those top issues might be. That you would want to be sure we have in looking at a, a two to three to five year range.
Could I propose that we develop a survey of sorts to send out to department heads and commissioners to gather that information before we meet in May? So that it can be kind of compiled and get us to. Spending time that day, talking about the larger achievements rather than going into the weeds.
I, I would agree Leslie, because I do better if I can get it beforehand and, and let it soak in a little bit. And marinate and then come and have a discussion. I, I think what I would like from departments is, is what are some critical needs?
Yeah.
Sometimes. We don't hear those, what they think are their critical needs until late in the budget season. And so if it's, if it's something that, you know, maybe we don't get it on this budget cycle, but three years from now, we can fit it in. It, because it's a long-term critical need, um, that would. We're gonna have to at some point, we have negotiations coming. So that's gonna be another, what do we have?
Nine.
Nine contracts.
Because. But, good, just to echo on that, when is the last time we did a, one of these?
It was 2021.
Okay.
Right? Is it, you have that list from 2021?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, that, we had done that same sort of list making for four, five, six years and it kind of ran its course. In, in my opinion.
Did we do a little one last year too, though?
We did a little one in January.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was in, last year? Or the year before? I think I was in Rochester. You guys were throwing around the table. I think we did last year, just a short little.
We did the EDA process last year. So. That is, I think where the goal setting came in was around economic development.
Right.
Um, to set the table to start the process of forming an EDA. Um, that's what we found in the minutes anyways. So. The last like county wide one was 2021.
Okay.
Just on general county.
I know that was always, I think priority, January, February, that we got it.
Yeah.
And I realize.
But we met up at the NAMAGI. Yeah, we did one at the NAMAGI.
Yeah.
January 12th. You're right. You were in Rochester.
No, that was a review of the 21 goals, wasn't it?
No reason.
No.
And there was a presentation of, um, the departments, brainstorming, stra, strategic issues for 2022, ranking them.
Strategic issues for 2022.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Broadway on community.
In the January of 22.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, so we missed 23. We're, we're several.
We're in 23.
Okay. Lost my mind. So speaking of surveys, the branding survey is on the county homepage. If you ever want to find it or refer people to it on the news and information, it's county branding, click on it. It takes you right to that site.
Do we have anything that we could put like, um, in what's happened in Hinckley or Pine City or whatever in those areas to get people to do the survey?
On the Facebook sites?
Yeah.
I'm always sharing stuff.
I know. I'm just wondering if we have something that.
Yeah, there's an image that's was distributed and I felt like a lot of the department pages were sharing it. I mean, we're, we're still, it's not over. It, it's just started. So. We're still working on getting it out, but yeah, hearing that people aren't seeing it is helpful. I know the feedback from the branding. Um, Civic Brand was that they were getting responses. So they were confident that people were getting it, but. Um, we can, yeah.
Yep. And I think, I think there'll be a piece in this week's newspaper, local paper on it as well.
I think we need to put it in like the Evergreen because that's free with the Scotsman or whatever.
But then. We took our, we took our box, we took our box down so they don't pull it in there.
I don't have one. Well, and, and that's, that is.
They just put it right in my box.
Solid waste on your list, Steve?
Yeah, we need to do solid.
Solid waste recycling.
That is the hard part is some people read that, some people read the newspaper, some people go on Facebook, some people. Uh, need like a blimp to go over their head or, or something to hit them in the head.
I have those days.
Yeah. I mean, we, you could always do more, but obviously it just all costs money and, and some people just are never gonna be engaged. So even when they should be.
They can complain.
Yeah. And even them people.
Yes, they're on the right trail. Is that all just gonna happen with Mark and Vinde now? We're done? Well, it's the beginning of it.
Yeah. At, regarding the Oberstar segment of the Munger Trail after 2024, it should be constructed from. Rock Creek to County Road nine Snake River.
Yeah. Is it going around the, on the side of the lake then?
Go through the river.
Yeah, to the bridge.
The bridge, yeah.
So then we know, we have our takeoff point from there as ours, right?
Yeah.
Where we get help with from the state. We got like, uh. Million. That's not that far from the hub on this intersection we're just talking about. From the feds. We just got about a million and two from the feds for that.
And that's when the talk too is how can we intertwine what Mille Lacs Ventures is doing and getting this trail to go through.
Anymore? Leslie? You need any more from us? We're running out of gas. I can tell.
I got something for Leslie is on this survey if I can, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it here and listening at the same time. On number 17. It's just a simple typo, but it just says, I am an employee of the city of Pine County. So I just haven't reviewed the rest of it, but, um, and it is, it is actually a survey monkey. So thank you, Terry, for sharing that. I didn't find it earlier.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks, JJ. Anything else? Anybody? Terry?
Nope.
Look like you have some. Otherwise we'll declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
See you, JJ.
Bye, JJ.
See you guys. Thank you, Leslie.
That.
So Leslie, I've asked you this so many times. Um, does it look like SCI Cable's gonna be able to break profits here? I have no idea.
Um, that's our plan. Yeah. Yep. They, um, start going through.
Hey, thanks, Ryan.
The environmental.